We're good. I will call the meeting to order of the Celine County Planning and Zoning Commission, August 22, 2023.
And Mr. Chair.
We got a lot of things to talk and discuss. I'm just gonna kinda lay the ground rules out. Everyone will be welcome to talk. You will be allowed five minutes, and you will only be once. And we have had in prior meetings that we do close our meeting at 10 o'clock. So if discussion lasts past that.
And just to kind of inform the public, those of you who are here, there was a misunderstanding in a publication, a Salina publication, that had this meeting as discussing solar facilities. There is no solar facility being considered this evening, and none being proposed. What we, we will be, you know, discussing items that will be on the agenda regarding energy, you know, battery, energy storage facilities, but not anything related to solar. Celine County currently does not have anything in their regulations that would allow solar. That would have to be something that would be addressed by this board, and then ultimately the county commission, to put in our regulations to allow such a use. But tonight's meeting will not involve any solar facilities whatsoever. So with that, you're welcome to stay, but as long as you keep your comments kind of limited to what's on the agenda. With that, I'll turn it back over to the chair.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay, so anyway, yes, everyone will be allowed to just talk. I will limit you to five minutes. When you come to the podium, please name an address and address only the commission. Okay? So with that, I think we're ready to open up the meeting. The first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda for tonight's meeting. Any discussion?
Mr. Chair, I move that we take CUP consideration of CUP 23-104 and put it ahead of 23-103.
I'll second that.
Has been properly moved and seconded that we change the agenda to bring the item 104, 2UP 23-104, to first on the agenda. Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. The motion does carry. Item B is the approval of the amendments from the last meeting. I want to thank Vice Chairman Mike for taking a good job of the meeting, and everyone was, and you did a good job, and you can take over anytime you like. So any discussion on the agenda?
Deep right there.
On the minutes, I do want to make one comment on the minutes. I wanted to thank Don. He made a comment with, about Dave Nowak. Please adjust the spelling of his name. His name has been spelled incorrectly in the minutes.
Oh, yes.
Okay, yeah, Dave was a very good man, good friend of all of ours.
He was.
So please adjust the spelling of his name. Any other discussion on the minutes?
Yes, I would like to correct one thing. I probably just didn't say it right, but when it says that I'm requesting that the planning commission be included in any upcoming hearings about, it just says wind farms here, but wind, solar, any of that, that kind of stuff. Okay, so that way, because I'm not very bright on that stuff, and I would need the help, so.
So just a addition to the minutes.
Right.
Any other comments on the minutes? If there are none, I will entertain a motion.
I'll entertain, I'll make, move to accept the minutes as amended, or as requested to be amended.
Second.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we adjust the minutes from the June 27 meeting, and all those favor say aye.
Aye.
Oppose, same sign. Passes unanimously. Okay, we're gonna change the agenda around, and we're gonna go to CUP 23-104. Staff, it's all yours.
Okay, this is a request by Todd Roeburg of American Sand and Gravel, for an expansion to the existing facility located in, basically, they're looking at expanding on 157-acre parcel adjoining 2108 East Waterwell Road, and located in Section 7 Township 15 South, Range 2 West. The, to the north, the zoning is agricultural, as is all four directions, southeast and west, and the land use is a combination of agriculture and residential. This is a request to consider the expansion of an existing mining operation located 2108 East Waterwell Road to an adjoining parcel to the west. This facility was originally approved under appeal of Aesop Sand, case number CUP 09-103, heard by the Celine County Commission in November of 2009. The current mining operation is nearing its end, and expansion to the west would ensure continued sand and gravel production for the area. In order for the Planning and Zoning Commission to approve a request for conditional use permit, they must find that all three of the general criteria set forth in 130604 of the Celine County Code are being met. And the criteria is that the location, size, design, operating characteristics of the proposed development will be compatible with and will not adversely affect the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood. Consideration is to be given to the harmony in scale, bulk, coverage, and density, to the availability of public facilities and utilities, to the harmful effect and proposed use of the desirable neighborhood character, to the, to the generation of traffic and the capacity of surrounding streets, and to any other relevant impact of the development. And in response, it's, the findings are that the proposed operation will be located in a part of Celine County that is characterized by a mixture of uses, mixed in with predominantly agricultural uses are single-family residences and agricultural-related businesses. Additional truck traffic will be generated by this use. Road and Bridge Department has submitted comments regarding the entrance for the expansion, and there will be noise from the dredging operations, but existing trees should provide seasonal buffering. Trees should remain. Overburden removal and sand pumping operations are not permanent. Upon completion of extraction of the sand, the property will be reclaimed per a required reclamation plan submitted to the county. Ongoing protection of the river and contaminants from flooding and other sources should be addressed. Item two, that the location, design, and site planning of the proposed development or use will not adversely impact the convenience or functional living environment as the nature of the use and its location and setting warrants. And the findings are that dust will be produced within the vicinity where the traffic is shared by residential traffic. However, noise, as stated earlier, may be audible to adjacent properties. Traffic issues must be adequately addressed. Item three, that the proposed development will enhance the successful operation of the surrounding area, and its basic community function will provide essential service to the community or region. And Celine County and the surrounding area have utilized product from this facility for a number of years. Expansion to the adjoining property would allow continued operation for several more years at this location. Other departments and agencies did submit comments. Justin Mater from the Celine County Road and Bridge Department stated that Celine County Road and Bridge prefers the access to the new site to be obtained from Matson Road. Matson Road is a gravel-surfaced road to the end of the houses. The road is a non-improved earth path north of the houses. R and B, Road and Bridge Department, is concerned about the amount of overburden material that will be trucked out of the new site and the impact to Matson Road. Road and Bridge would require Matson Road to be improved with the American Sand property line south to Mentor Road. This work shall be performed and paid for by American Sand. Celine County has adopted minimum road design and construction standards. These road improvements shall be designed by a principal engineer licensed in Kansas, and the, and the plans must be approved by my office prior to construction. That would be Road and Bridge. Specific design requirements will be provided by Road and Bridge at a later time, and I believe those standards were already shared with the applicant. The other agency that responded was State of Kansas Division of Water Resources, and the statement is that since the sand pit operations are often in floodways, permits are still required because new material fill is being added to the floodway. It can be a challenge because they're basically not static. One option is to issue a conditional use permit and require a maximum load, no rise analysis, in which the analysis shows the maximum amount of material that can be on-site at any given time that will not cause a rise to adjacent properties. They should also reach out to Janelle Phillips with Division of Water Resources about state permitting. There is a state law that exempts stockpiles of material if the plant existed before January 1st of 2006. Otherwise, stockpiles would require a state permit. There could be a water, water rights issue if groundwater is exposed in the pit. So Janelle Phillips should be able to help with permitting concerns there. So staff did receive some, a little concern from, from citizens regarding safety and conditions, but not, not anything significant. Alternatives would be to approve the CUP based on specific findings with the recommended conditions. Approve the CUP based on specific findings with additional or amended conditions. Deny the CUP based on specific findings. Table the request for additional information stating the date, time, and place for the application will be reconsidered. Approval or denial requires that the commission state the reasons for approval or denial. If the planning commission can make all the necessary findings to recommend approval of this request, staff would, would propose the following conditions, the, being placed on the approval, which is, the development of this, of the site will be in substantial compliance with the detailed site plan approved by the county Planning and Road, Road and Bridge Department, and according to any conditions imposed by the Celine County Planning Commission. Any deviation from any imposed conditions will require approval by the Celine County Planning Commission. Item two, any landscaping along the perimeter of the property that provides screening and/or buffering shall not be removed unless dangerous or diseased and removal is authorized by Road and Bridge Department. A permanent screen shall be provided along Waterwell Road. The screen shall either be an attractive and well-maintained solid fence, or shall consist of evergreen or deciduous trees. A copy of the reclamation plan will need to be filed with the planning department prior to any activity occurring on that site. Adequate overburden will be removed from the site and will be stockpiled reserved for reclamation purposes. Any violations of either the zoning resolution or the conditional use permit that are not promptly addressed will, will be caused for the CUP to be reevaluated before the planning commission. If the CUP is reevaluated for violations three times, the planning commission may determine they have cause to revoke the conditional use permit. This expansion will need to be registered with the State Conservation Commission, and a copy of the registration will need to be sent to planning department prior to activity commencing on this new site. The applicant will need to submit to the planning department documentation from the Division of Water Resources indicating that adequate water rights have been obtained for the subject properties, and submit verification from the Division of Water Resources that all applicable DWR permits have been obtained. The applicant will need to file a notice of intent with the Kansas Department of Health and Environment to determine if any permits will be required. Evidence of approval from KDHE will be required prior to any activity occurring at this new site. The 157-acre site may lie within, may lie within 1,000-foot protection zone adjacent to the city's flood control levee. No excavation should occur in this area without Army Corps of Engineer review and approval. Access to the new site shall be on Matson Road with all improvements meeting the Celine County Road and Bridge standards from property line to Mentor, Mentor Road. Only excavation will be permitted in the floodway with flood development permit required from the county, along with a maximum load, no rise analysis showing the maximum amount of material that can be on-site before a rise in elevation will occur and will be required prior to activity. The applicant will continue to post a sign at the main entrance gate giving a contact name and telephone number for individuals to call if they have any complaints about the operation. If the property is sold, the conditional use permit will expire, and last regular business hours will be 7:00 a.m. to 5:00 p.m. Monday through Friday, and 7:00 a.m. to 12:00 p.m. on Saturday. Dredging and sorting may occur outside of business hours. Access to public outside of business hours will not be allowed. With that, I will turn it over to you all.
Okay, thank you, staff. That's, this time, I will ask the commissioners, do you have any questions, only for staff?
I don't feel that the neighborhood has been advised that this was even being considered properly. I know we met the letter of our, our rules, but no one on Matson Road was aware of this at all. And I'll go in so far as to say no one on Waterwell, or on Mentor Road was aware of any of it, which would all be affected by the traffic caused by this.
Okay. So with that, if we did not properly inform everyone, then we should table it?
Technically, they were informed properly within the 1,500 feet of the property lines, but it would be up to you as to, this board, as to determine whether or not you're comfortable with that.
I'll leave it up to discussion of the commissioners. There seems to be some question on whether or not we notified everyone properly. If you want to proceed forward with it, I'll have the applicant come forward. If not, I'll entertain a motion to table it.
Mr. Commissioner, I would, motion that we...
Excuse me, sir. I do have one question before we do a motion. With regard to the last point on here, point 15, regular business hours, 7 to 5, Monday through Friday, and 7 to 12 on Saturday. Then it says dredging and sorting may occur outside of business hours. Access to public outside of business hours will not be allowed. That's fine, that it's not allowed, but is there anything to say that they could create noise, create light throughout the night at the location that may affect residents in the neighborhood? It's, leaves them pretty open to do what they want, whenever they want, except serve customers.
And just to point out, that particular point was actually from the approval from 2009 that the county commission, that was the condition that they put on it back in 2009 when it was Aesop Sand. So you have, you can modify that any way you want to at this point for that, for this particular...
Well, the reason I bring that up is because it was near a residential area, but we had a same situation in a place I, a different state where I lived before, and I owned commercial property next to it. And occasionally, I would be there late at night and think, my goodness, they're making so much racket over there, and I was like, I would not want to live in this neighborhood. So I would like to, when, if we table it, I would like to address that at the next point. Maybe put a little, have discussion about putting a little more...
You make a good comment, because we had this discussion on this point, and we actually set it up through the commission of limited hours. It wasn't open like this comment was, it was not open like this comment made it here. They came before us, and we set some hours.
Parameters.
So they weren't dredging at 3:00 in the morning.
Okay.
And that was, we've had that discussion. That's a very good point.
I just want to be on record as saying that...
Additional hours would be subject to.
Okay.
I think I'm gonna go ahead, I'm gonna bring the applicant forward and have him discuss this before we move forward with any motions. The applicant, come forward and state your name and tell us what's up.
Todd Roeburg, 2539 Dundee Lane, Salina. Yeah, there's probably some confusion about what we're actually doing. So we're not changing any of the operation from what it is right now, other than where we're actually extracting the sand from. The plant, the traffic, the, you know, the hauling out of any sand gravel and that is going to be exactly like it is right now. We're, all we're looking to do is to, to put a dredge, which is a boat, on the west side of the river, and we'll run a, we plan on running a pipeline from the dredge that will pump the sand back to the current plant location. So the stockpiles, everything will be in the same location. So the only thing that will be over there is, we'll be making a pond. The, there will be no increased traffic from what there currently is. The only, there will be traffic, probably 10% of what we sell is, or that we move from the location is the dirt or the overburden. That will come, that is the only material that will go out through Mentor Road. And that's only because we don't have a bridge across, across there. We, we plan on a day-to-day activity to access across the river. We're looking at putting a walk bridge across there to, we'll still access off of Waterwell on a daily basis, because that's where our shop, our office, everything is. We look at, at, really, the only time we have any truck traffic over there is if we're moving overburden. And like I said, that's probably 10% of what we move at the best. As far as dredging hours, I mean, this, this plant's been in operation since 2009. I purchased it from Allsop in 2018. I don't know that there's ever been any noise complaints after hours on that plant. We would, we don't have lights set up on it anyway, so we wouldn't...
Do you normally dredge after business hours?
No. I mean, 5:00 is when we quit dredging, and it's...
You don't have an issue if we said that anything outside that would be subject to commission approval?
Yeah, I mean, occasionally, when, when things are extremely busy, we might want to dredge past 5:00.
Sure.
But it would all be daylight hours. I mean, it wouldn't be anything outside of daylight hours, for sure. We're currently supplying approximately 90% of the, of the sand to the, to both the ready-mix plants in the county, and it's a huge economic impact if we don't continue producing sand. The biggest, the biggest problem with any sand producing around is water rights. We have the water rights to continue that operation for... We have the water rights to continue that operation for at least another probably 20 years, 25 years anyway, to complete that 157 acres. Water rights are extremely hard to get. They're way harder to get than it is, you know, the ground. I mean, you have to have the right ground. The, the other thing about this location where we're looking at moving to, to the west, it was previously owned by Gary Harbin. I recently just purchased it from Harbin. I owned a piece to the, straight to the south, and Gary and I swapped ground there due to the fact that there's a lot less overburden on that piece to the west and more sand production. So we're looking at, a lot less overburden is a lot less to haul out of there, so it's more feasible. And, you know, again, as far as noise, so that, that is back in a river bend that's way more contained than where we're dredging at right now.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's encompassed by trees and river by probably close to 150 degrees around there, so, you know, like I say, the biggest thing is we were, our deposit we thought was going, was going to last longer than it is, but with all the economic development in Saline County, we're rapidly depleting our, our deposit due to all the concrete construction around. And like I said, we, we supply 100% to the MCM and we supply the majority now to Saline County. They buy a little bit outside of us, but it will be a huge economic development issue in Saline County if we aren't able to do something with this pretty quick.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, hang tight. Commissioners have questions? Fire away.
Is it appropriate to question the applicant?
Yeah, the applicant, yep.
I have background in ready-mix concrete production. The, the piece in question that you're applying for, how does it compare to other, and I hope it's a fair question, how does it compare to other areas that have, or compared to other areas in overburden?
It's probably, from where we're currently mining, it's probably 30 to 40% less overburden there than where we're currently mining at.
Do or will you have a plan to store what needs to be hauled out?
I don't know, I, to be honest with that answer, currently, I don't know exactly the answer to that because we, we're in the permitting process with, with Division of Water Resources, and part of that is being that it's in a floodway and floodplain, you can only store so much in, you know, in that area, so...
But do, would you be owning the property that the reclamation material would be stored on?
Yeah.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Okay. Um, with all my questioning, I do realize, having been in that business or in, related to it, it's extremely expensive to haul sand in from distances. And I understand what you say when, especially, I mean, that directly hits the consumer. So I'm not adversarial in that, I just want to know the facts. You know, when you have to haul sand in, like we did up in Iowa from 90 miles away, concrete prices go through the roof and that affects building and that affects the consumer.
Yeah.
And so, just letting you know my opinions on it and wanting to know the, the facts on what you're planning.
Sure.
Any other comments, questions that the Commission wants to make to the applicant? Thank you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Well, I'll bring it back to the Commission. I will entertain a motion, whether it be to table it or move forward.
I motion that we table this.
Make that in a proper motion, would you?
I, I motion that we table, conditionally use.
I move.
I move.
Thank you.
CUP 23-104 to a later date.
I guess I need to bring this back. Is there any public discussion? I am sorry, I did not open up to public discussion.
If you're going to table it, you can just table the public part later. If you move forward, then you can open it up.
Okay.
Now, didn't I see in there, if, if we table it, we have to say it's being tabled till when? Did I see that?
Yes, that's, it would be...
It would be till the next month meeting, yeah.
What's the date on that?
You have 60 days to, what's the date on that?
September 26th.
September 26th?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I second that motion.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we table motion CUP 23-104 until the next meeting of September...
26.
Let me write that down. We'll table it to September 26th.
2023.
Of 2023. Do I have any discussion?
Mr. Chairman, I, I want to bring up a point this gentleman did right here a little bit ago about notification. Is there anything else that we need to direct staff to do as far as notification, make sure everybody in that, in the impacted area knows?
One of the things that I kind of briefly touched on prior to the meeting was that since we are updating our zoning code and those notification requirements are outlined in the zoning code, we can address it probably the next, you know, next, within the next couple of meetings or so, I can open it up for discussion to change them.
Obviously, these folks were notified and they knew about it, but I don't know whether we missed anybody. That's my concern, that we missed notifying somebody.
The way the state statute reads, it's every, you know, within 1,500 feet of the boundary of the, of the parcel. And now, the only thing is, is was the part, the, the correct parcel actually, you know, included with that, I, you know, as far as the notification area? And, and that's something we'll look into if you want me to, but I think that we, we did follow with the parcel that we did choose, we did choose the, it is their facility and it's within 1,500 feet and, but we can, if you want to re-notice and re-publish.
Any, Commission have any other discussion before I put it up for a vote?
Just, just one question. Are there several other properties that are near the 1,500-foot range, but that were just outside of it? They weren't notified? Or do we know?
Let him finish his.
We got, we got one of the members up here.
He's asking, okay. Yeah, he's asking how many other people would be affected that we think we've missed.
Are there some that are just outside the 1,500-foot notification range?
Yeah, that's something we'll probably have to look into.
At that point, in my opinion, it would be a courtesy, seeing that we're not obligated.
Right. At this point, since it's...
Sorry, Ken, I didn't mean to cut it.
No, no, that's fine.
Did you want to make another comment, please?
Yeah, my question is, is so if you table this and you elected to deviate from the current statute that you have of the 1,500 feet, what is it that you're going to notify then? I mean, what...
That's what we're saying, we may be notifying half a dozen more people.
You're just going to have something up now and just make it up and decide what you're going to do now? You're not going to follow your current rules?
Well, what it would fall in line with is which parcel. So is it the one that you're currently at, or is it the one that we would note, we would include the area that, of the expansion as well?
The map that I seen that, that you had, the 1,500-foot range was from the new parcel.
Was from the new, oh, it's...
I think that's clear, and I'm, of, in favor of following the rules of the 1,500 feet from the map that's been presented.
That's, I mean, that was, that's my question. Biggest thing is that we're just, if this gets drug out too far, just keep in mind that Saline County is, the ready-mix plants are going to run out of sand, or they're going to be hauling in from quite a ways, and it's, the concrete price is going to go dramatically.
The most we'd be looking at would be the next meeting of 30 days out.
Yeah.
Yeah. Thank you for your comments. Okay, I will, I've entertained a motion. Any discussion on the amendment? I will put it up to a vote, then although in favor, raise your right hand. Opposed?
I oppose.
Okay, you got two against. You got three against?
Three against.
Okay.
Yeah, I oppose all.
Thank you, Ken. Okay. So there's your final count. Is that Carrie?
Yeah.
It's not two-thirds majority.
Would have to be a six, three. Two on Zoom.
Of, of no?
No, one, no, one.
Okay, so you got a six, three?
Six, three.
Okay.
If I remember right, Ken went no.
Ken went no, I went no.
Paul?
Paul went no.
Paul went no, too, so it's four.
So that is not a majority. The last two-thirds?
Yeah.
So, as of right now, the motion to table it has failed. We will move on with, correct, we have failed the, we have failed the motion to table it.
Right.
So we will now bring it back, and I will entertain a motion to...
To open the public comment.
Okay, thank you, thank you. We've got so much going on here. Okay. Okay, we're going to open it up, discussion, because then we're going to make a motion to approve or deny this application. So any public comments? This, it's all yours.
One.
Five minutes. State your name, address.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you.
My name is June Ferguson. I live at 4844 South Matson Road. I understand from previous dealings with sand pits, the county regulation for the 1,500 feet notification radius, but to me, it, it makes absolutely no sense to think that the two families that live on Matson Road that would directly be impacted by this decision were not notified. So we didn't have a chance to gather our wits. That's, that's my first point. My second point is the not adversely affecting the livability or appropriate development of abutting properties in the surrounding neighborhood. Well, we moved to the country for peace and quiet. We did not move to the country to have dump trucks going up and down the road all day. I, I didn't know the man from the sand pit. I, I wanted to clarify because I thought he said that the majority of the overburden hauling would be on Mentor Road. Now, I don't know whether he meant via Matson Road or whether he meant Matson Road. And my question is, on the application, it says, and from what it sounded like he said, the operation would still be operating on Waterwell Road. So I don't know why Matson Road is really involved at all, to tell you the truth, because from what he said, he made it sound like it would just be the same. And the county paid a lot of money to reinforce the Waterwell Road where it intersects with Ohio to carry truck traffic, heavy trucks. So it would make sense to use that outlet, I would think, as opposed to Matson Road, which it says here is gravel, but is mostly sand and a little bit of gravel. The road hasn't been adequately maintained in years. We've lived there almost 25 years. There's two areas that are blind that I almost, if you meet the mail truck there, one of you's going to go off the river. So there's no barricades, there's no fence, there's no, nothing to keep you from going right over the edge of the river. And the river edge has eroded the road to the point that it's right there. So there would be a lot of work because that road, I don't think, is really even a two-car road. It's just sort of a path. So there's that. There's a curve, very blind. When you pull out onto Mat, Mentor Road, it's very blind coming from the south, traffic coming from the south. So it was mentioned that there would be noises and dust. We're used to dust with harvest and things. That's just sort of the nature of living in the country, but, but there again, up and down, up and down, every, multiple times a day would not be good. Plus, the noise, I don't know what he meant about the trees buffering sound because from our, where we live, there's no trees there that would buffer that sound. There's, there's a, like a hedgerow on the north side there, I mean, on the east side, but there really isn't anything that would buffer the noise that would come directly to our house. So those are just some points I wanted to bring up. Thank you.
Thank you.
And I just wanted to kind of bring out, I think Justin is here, and if you have any question, Justin Mater from Roden Bridge, so if, if you have any questions for him.
It was just Jeff Bennett. We own property on Waterwell Road, connected to the properties that he's currently mining. And a couple of things I want to mention is, I had a lot of the same concerns when they first started talking about putting this mining operation right next to our property. But I can tell you from experience what happened. They improved our road and it needed it, and so we're really pretty good with that. And then luckily, you know, a few years later, I believe it was, they paved the road. But when they improved the road, it was very good. They did a good job and I had no complaints then. As far as sound, I admit, I'm a little hard of hearing, but my family, nobody's ever had any noise complaints since Mr. Roeburg took over. They've been good neighbors, you know, so I, that's just what I can tell you from my experience with Mr. Roeburg and his operation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other public comment?
I do have a quick question.
Go ahead.
Okay, so if you're talking about moving on to, is this Southbound Road here, Matson, and it's currently using Waterwell, it does say here that Justin Mater, which is available, prefers access to the new site be obtained from Matson, which then all the other requirements are, needed to be met. Does it, was there any kind of study that was done that prefers Matson as opposed to continual use on the Waterwell?
Bring him forward, then I'm going to bring the applicant back forward.
Justin Mater, the Saline County engineer. Yeah, we, we looked at Matson and we looked at Farley, because those are really the two routes where there's existing right-of-way. Farley runs east and west, and it's really, and as, as it sits right now, there's no road there now. The right-of-way is there, but there's no road. And so we're looking at, you know, with that overburden, all the overburden's going to have to be hauled out, you know, coming south out of that property. So you either go straight south out, out of Matson, or you take it straight east. So, sorry, let me, let me rephrase that. So you take it straight south on Matson to Mentor Road. Mentor Road currently sees, you know, significant heavy truck traffic. And so the impact on Mentor would be, I want to say insignificant, but somewhat minor because it's already seen a lot of that heavy truck traffic. If the route was Farley and they would take it over to Holmes Road, and then they would have to go north on Holmes Road up to Waterwell, there's a lot more residents that live along that route, and so there's a, a bigger impact. Also, the length of road that would be maintained by Roden Bridge would be longer. It's better to go, that's why we said it's better to go south on Matson to Mentor Road. So Matson, you know, like they, they mentioned, is a gravel road from Mentor to the north of the house. And the, the one speaker was correct, it's not much of a gravel road because really we're servicing two houses there. You know, so it's, it's more of a sand, does not have much structural capacity. So that's an issue.
Is it safe for truck traffic?
I've got a lot of concerns about Matson Road because... I've got a lot of concerns about Matson Road, because, you know, the curve, the road curves around the river. There's not much site distance. Right now, the road is very narrow. It's get-
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
It, it will be, you know, it, it's easy to add capacity to the road, because then, you know, you add rock, um, you know, six inches of rock, you know, another inch of sand on top of that to get the road capacity. But my concern is, you know, the width, you know, you really, you need width. You think, gotta think, you know, there's gonna be, you know, either two trucks, you know, that meet each other. You know, also, this, you know, this, um, this road provides access to, you know, agricultural equipment. There's a big ag equipment that's coming through, you know, using that road. You know, and so if they're gonna meet a truck, you know, in those areas where there's not much site distance, um, because of the trees along the river, it can get kind of tricky. Even if, you know, I'm thinking if this thing goes through, it, you know, it's gonna be, it'd have to be posted thirty miles per hour or less. But still, it, it does provide me, you know, some, some pretty good concerns.
So, sir, if I may ask, and you're talking about Matson Road?
Matson, yes.
If you have so many concerns about it, why did you recommend it?
Because I got concerns on, on, um, Farley Road, you know, as well. Farley Road, and then, you know, the concerns going north on, on Holmes Road. There's a lot more conflict, especially as you turn on Holmes Road, with other traffic. You know, here on Matson, you know, the, the traffic is less, you know, because again, you know, two homes and, um, you know, a couple cultivated fields. You know, so the, the exposure is less, um, you know, than what you're gonna have on Holmes Road. So, that's, that's, that's just what our recommendation.
What about where Matson enters, uh, Mentor Road? You're entering on a corner where it's aligned to both directions?
Correct. Yeah, and it, there'd have to be some, you know, look at that, you know, really look at that, and we'd have to have some improvements through there. But also, Todd, you know, you want to let them know kind of what your thoughts were north of the house, or north of the houses, where there's currently just a dirt path?
Yeah, maybe to clarify a little bit. I, I think, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think Justin's indicating-
Could you get on the microphone, please?
I think Justin's indicating is concerns the road in the current condition. But we're, we're willing to, to follow the recommendations, and, I mean, we hired a professional engineer. I've been in contact with Call Valley to redesign that road up to whatever your current standards are. Whether it's realigning the road, taking some of the curve out, whatever we have to do to where, you know, Sling County Road and Bridge is okay with it. You know, at our expense to do that.
Well, that was my reason for questioning it, because I read through this multiple times to see what all the conditions are and what was going through. Lastly, this morning, and I was like, it pretty much expressly states that you would do that.
Right. Yeah, and I'm not, you know, I'm not up here complaining about it. I don't really like it.
No, but I was just wondering why this is all called into-
You know, it's probably, it, it's, it's probably, you know, I own T and R Construction too, so we're a civil contracting company, so we have the capabilities of building roads and stuff. We, we, we build a lot of streets in Sling County, or in, uh, Salina here, most of the new residential streets we've been building. But anyway, so, but it's still gonna cost us, I mean, it, it, it could be two hundred, two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that it'll cost me to fix that road up. But if that's what we have to do, I'm, I'm, I'm trying not to argue that and delay this process. So I'm willing to do that to get this project going. So that's basically my comments on that.
Thank you to both of you. Any other public comment? Come to the podium, please.
I'm Doug Forsberg, twenty-six fifty-two East Mentor Road. It'll affect me a lot, because you're either gonna go east or you're gonna go west to get off, out of Matson Road. And I live just about a half a mile on east of Matson Road. And, uh, as much truck traffic as there is, uh, it's gonna really compound the problem. I, I think, being able to, uh, with all the blind spots coming out of Matson, you can't see either way what's coming at you. And also up at the flood control bridge on, um, what's the name of the street? Ohio, for God's sake. That is a nasty corner. And if it's, it's a, if it's a trailer and a, and a tractor, it's gonna be very difficult to make that corner. And, um, I, I just think that if, if, uh, you do go along with him, it would have to be mandatory to go out the Waterwell, to Waterwell. My God, for all the pain and agony that we went through to get that paved, um, back in the day. It seems to me like that is the place to exit and enter. And I don't like dust. Thank you.
Thank you, Doug.
I maybe should make another comment about that. I think there's-
Sure, come back to the podium, please.
Yeah, I, I think maybe there's not, everybody's not quite understanding that. So, like I said, the majority of all of our product, that, the, the, the product that goes out on a daily basis out of our plant is sand, rock, gravel. That's gonna continue. That will not change. That'll go out on Waterwell Road, because we're-
You're gonna pump over to-
Pumping over to the current site.
Right.
Stockpile's been the same place. Everything goes out that way. The only thing that'll go out Matson to Mentor, and I wouldn't foresee anything going east on Mentor, unless for some reason there was something going towards Gypsum or somewhere like that. But the majority of the overburden that we haul out comes in this line of her building sites. And, you know, so we'd be going west on Mentor. And like I said, that, that is not on a daily basis by no means. I mean, we haul overburden out or dirt out on, you know, it's sometimes once a month for a few days. It's, it's, it's a small percentage of what we haul out of there. So I just want to kind of-
And I think that's a good point you brought up. The truck traffic that we're thinking of the most of is staying where it's at.
Exactly. Nothing's gonna change.
Nothing is changing in that.
Nothing's changing there. The, the only truck traffic that changes is any of the dirt overburden from the new site. We'll have to go out that way, because there's no bridge to cross the, the river. That's the only way to take that out. And that's, that's not on a daily basis. It's not, you know, it, it, it could easily, there's times we go weeks, maybe a month or something without ever hauling any out. And then, you know, we might haul for a couple of days. So it just-
Good point. Thank you, thank you. Any other?
One other comment?
All right.
As I sit here thinking about Matson Road, when it goes down to the river, it's right next to the river. And it does continue to eat away at it whenever there's high water, but we're not too worried about high water today. Or at least I'm not. But that, you're gonna have to make arrangements to put the road somewhere else, because you can't continue to use it after that bank caves off. And it did cave off down north at the river, and that road used to go all the way around to Farley. But that road had to be shut down for many, many years ago. For consideration.
Any other public discussion?
My name is Charlie Solace. I live at forty-eight, eighty-eight South Matson Road. And, uh, Matson Road sucks. I don't see that being a pro, uh, uh, viable route to take stuff out. They've already moved the road over twice, because it's washed that bank out. We've already bought land off of Nichols before it was ever sold to these guys. Right now, last year, they had to move the electric pole at the first curve back from the river, because it's already washed back in. This, uh, the next high water that comes in, that road is going to be cleared back over, or the river's going to be cleared back over into the road again. I don't know who's gonna get the, uh, you're gonna have eminent domain on the south part of that to get out? To make your road to get out, to make it wide enough? You can't even take a combine out of the road right now, because the power pole and the tree line are right there. I don't think they're gonna give you permission. I know she's not gonna give you permission to widen the road. How are you gonna get out? The road is not going to do unless you have eminent domain somewhere on the south end. The thing is washing out.
So the farmlander has no access?
Pardon?
So the farmland owner has no access to it either?
Well, he doesn't either, it doesn't sound like.
Oh, yeah. They go out to, to get a combine through there with a header on it. They go out into Oddy's Field. Right now. You can't, you can't get down the road with anything, it's, it takes up the entire road right now on the south end. You're gonna have to do something. I don't think that-
There's a man that can answer the question.
Have you checked about eminent domain with clay?
No, it's, it's, and all his concerns are, are valid.
Right. We have them all over the county that way.
Correct, correct. You know, so especially on that south end, on the east side, you've got a tree row, and from what I've, what I've been told, a landowner, they, that will not be an easy purchase, any kind of right-of-way, and you gotta tear the trees out. So, you know, therefore, you take out all the, you know, the noise and the sight. I mean, it's, that's gonna be a hard, hard, hard one. You know, and all the way up, up through there around the curve is gonna be very, very difficult. So it's, it's not ideal at all.
That'll be your call of what happens.
It's, yeah, it's, it's not ideal at all.
The curve, like Doug said, that curve, we don't, we have to get to the middle of the road to make a turn to come back to Matson Road right now. Because you cannot see around the curve.
I have several of them in my countryside too. A chainsaw would help immensely to give me line of sight.
And we have, we have a lot of traffic now. I, you know, you increase it, you know, even like you said, a little bit, and it's gonna be ugly.
And I guess my discussion is, and that's just gonna fall back, the applicant will lose the ability to use that road. Right? He'll have to make other arrangements if that happens.
Something, you know, well, it keeps coming back.
But, but if that, but if that happens, you won't have access to your house either. And that's a natural occurrence.
It's, it's already moved back three times. It, we've already had the, uh, it wasn't done right the first time. They spent three hundred fifty thousand dollars. And the county hired somebody from Louisiana, and they filled it in with fill sand, and then in ninety-five, it washed it clear back out again.
How do you know they were from Louisiana?
What's that?
How do you know they were from Louisiana?
Because I, when I rode down there every day, he got in his pickup and got the hell out of there. And I said, this ain't gonna work. Six months later, it didn't. It was clear back over into the middle of the road.
Please address the count, the committee.
I guess my, my question is then, we, we know it is gonna be tough, but i- is it doable to make that road usable without, without the county commission screaming at us about breaking their budget?
It's, it's gonna be very, very difficult. But also going out on Farley and then up Ohio is, is really not a real good solution either. You know, because now you're, you're having to improve, even if let's just say we, you know, to improve the, the capacity, you have to build some road. And then you have to improve the, improve the capacity of those roads with grading, you know, and all those, there's a lot of those same improvements, you know, for two miles. And it-
The thing about that route is, at least there are corners that you can see, as opposed to being on blind corners. And, uh, you're right, there's a lot of work to do on those roads as well, but you're talking the difference between maintaining the mile that you have from Mentor Road to Ohio Street, and the two miles that you have from where you're talking the other way.
And going up on, on Holmes, you know, that'll take you to Holmes and Waterwell, okay? You know, keep going north, yeah, there's, there's a lot of homes there. You know, that's where you get paved road intersection there. You know, going north is a lot of homes, going east is a lot of homes, and going, going west is a road that, that, um, you know, we've asked American Sand not to haul loaded. Um, you know, because it doesn't have the capacity on that road that we would like. And so now we're saying, okay, let's put more traffic on that road. We're telling them to stay off of it, and, and they've usually been pretty good about it. And now we're saying, now we, you have to use it. And so that's, that's kind of hard for me as well.
Well, we talk about breaking the county budget and all this on that, but when I've read through this several times, the conditional use permit application and what's involved in it, the applicant has agreed to pay for improvements. It's not like we're gonna be paying for them to make money. They know it's gonna have to, they're gonna have to shoulder the brunt of this. I just don't.
And my department will deal with whatever is decided.
Right, right, right.
From, from the county's-
That was my understanding, that they were shouldering most of the financial burden for improving the road.
Correct.
To build a road that's suitable for them to haul overburden out.
Suitable to Sling County rules.
Correct. You are correct, sir.
Right. So it may become cost prohibitive, and he decides not to do that no more.
Mr. Chairman, Ken Stromberg.
Ken?
Yeah, from the county's perspective, can we even make the road to what we would consider to be safe for the truck and vehicle traffic?
Are you referring to Matson Road?
Yes.
You know, we, we haven't done that, that level of analysis on it. You know, I'm not, I'm not gonna spend a lot of staff time, you know, doing this full analysis if the whole thing just dies.
Right.
So it's, if, if that's the way we're gonna have to go, um, you know, Todd said they're already talking with a consultant, you know, to look into that. And it's gonna be up to what, what they come up with. You know, it's, we're gonna be working with a consultant to see what we can get. Ideally, I would like to have a forty, not ideal. Part of the regulations, or part of the, the requirements that I would like to see is to have a forty-mile-per-hour road. That's the design. And so with, there's a speed, there's certain design requirements for forty miles per hour. Okay? And so it's, it's really to see what they can get, you know, through there.
Mr. Chairman, there's a, a lady in the back who would like to speak. Come on up. Sorry, I'm overstepping.
June Ferguson again. Um, I would not want to meet anyone on that curve at forty miles an hour. I will say that. The other thing that strikes me as odd is, why would it be worth three hundred and fifty thousand dollars to improve Matson Road for something that he said he would only haul once a month, possibly?
And that's his decision.
Well, it just seems strange to me.
That's what I'm hearing. It's his decision, whether he wants to spend the money to meet his regulations.
Would it have to be built to the, oh, excuse me?
You know the rules here.
I forgot.
Come on, you know the rules.
It just seems to me that, uh, uh, I don't know what the minimum for a, uh, mile of gravel road is now, but when I was on commission, it was very substantial. And is it gonna be a requirement to go to the county standards on that road?
Ask the man behind you.
Will it be to county standards?
So, yeah, so we've got minimum design standards, okay, that we just passed. However, you know, that, that's for a brand-new road, okay? On existing road, then it's up to the county engineer and the commissioners to apply different standards. Now, because this is gonna be a truck, you know, this is gonna have trucks on it, I'm actually requiring a higher standard than the minimum.
Good.
Any other questions, comments, complaints? If not, I'm gonna close the discussion. Thank to all of you for the discussion. Thank to all of you for the discussion. Applicant, is there anything else you'd like to add? Thank you for your input. Okay, I'll bring it back to the commission. You've got a decision to make, I need a motion.
We're not gonna discuss?
All right, I'll let you discuss it, Paul, all right.
Well, I've been listening...
Yeah, I'll bring it back. Is there any further discussion within the commission? I'm sorry.
I've been listening to this discussion. We're using a, uh, less than well-maintained road for very little truck traffic that's gonna be utilized infrequently. We can spend the money to go over to Farley and build a road over to Farley, or we can allow the applicant to build or maintain the Mattson Road. But regardless, uh, it's not the perfect situation. We are dealing with a resource that Saline County needs.
Right.
And we have to come to a resolution on how to get that resource out of that location. And the resource is the overburden, it's not the sand. He's already said multiple times, the traffic is gonna be minimal, the, any sand traffic is gonna be going out of the existing site. We're not talking a lot of truck traffic. And we really need to be considerate of the fact that this is a resource, a sand resource that this, the county needs. We're dealing with two houses. We're dealing with, and I, I can speak from experience because I'm one house on a road. So I know about what it's like to have the house and the, and the traffic. But the point is, um, we've just, we beat the, beat the horse to death on this.
Yeah.
I think the applicant has done his, his due diligence by explaining the fact that there's gonna be minimal truck traffic on this road. It's not a great road. I agree. Yeah, the road's gonna slough in. The county already has knowledge of this. The county will take care of that. My personal opinion is, uh, we've done, uh, the applicant has done everything that has been asked of him. And I think we need to move on.
I agree. Thank you, Paul.
That's my comment.
Thank you, Paul. And I agree totally with him. I think the applicant's brought everything forward.
I'm not done asking.
It, um, you know, it's basically gonna be his decision, uh, whether or not it's feasible to spend the money to move those few trucks out of there. The commodity that we're concerned about is gonna go as its way. It's always had no additional traffic on the, on this area here. So, yeah, I think the applicant's done his job. And we're, we're beating the, the horse dead too many times over a couple trucks of dirt. Go ahead.
Well, there's still the noise of the, of the mining operation. Because contrary to what, uh, was said earlier, uh, it is loud where we live.
Sure.
And, uh, the, uh, we do hear it. And that is with the, the tree, you know? So if that 30% or so that's not tree lined now is what's open to us, then it's gonna be worse.
But if you read this, the recommendation of the conditional use permit, it addresses that?
No, it addresses that it's already there. It doesn't address adding anything to the parts that are not covered.
Are you sure?
Yes.
That's not how I read it. I maybe have read wrong, but...
I, I read that it was, it was already tree lined.
I read that it was to be either tree lined with evergreens or deciduous trees or maintained with a...
Fence. The fence.
Fence.
That's not the other direction. It said to Waterwell Road.
Let's get the exact wording. What's the exact wording, guys, we're talking about?
It says Waterwell Road.
Does it say Waterwell?
It does.
So do we need to change?
Also that, you know, it is two, two homes on Minter Road, but there's more, more homes on further that are on, that face, uh, Minter Road.
Well, I thought it was already established that there's heavy truck traffic on those roads anyway.
There's some traffic. You're adding more traffic to it. And I'm, I'm not, I'm not trying to beat that dead horse, but we keep, we keep sticking on two houses.
Right.
It's more than two houses when you look at that.
Anybody that's involved is affected and we're concerned.
That's, that's all I'm bringing up.
Right.
I'm not, I'm not trying to beat it to death. I'm just saying, don't stick on two because there's more. There's just two on Mattson Road.
So we need, so we need to discuss some tree lines added on any other side? Would that help?
I think we need to.
Can you bring that? Give me some descriptions here of where we're talking about.
So I'm requesting we consider requiring, uh, some sort of sound...
Where at?
To the south of this property. On the south side of the post.
Do we have a map we can put up? Sorry I make you gals work. I mean, he's making a viable point. That if we can do some trees to help out with the sound, we're looking after the neighborhood.
Man, she's having to dig for this, too. I'm sorry.
Because we, we got a map in our packet, and that's where, can we put it up here?
It looks like there's about a 50-foot spot that isn't covered by trees.
Sorry it's taking so long, but I think it's a very important discussion for everybody.
Right there.
Tim, are there some trees out there now where we're talking about?
I believe there's some existing ones that are on, like what they were saying, Waterwell.
He's taken out of here.
But I didn't see any south.
He's taken out of this spot.
Yeah.
That colored map.
I'm sorry, you're right, you're right.
The only spot that's not covered by trees is right there.
There are tree lines, uh, along Mattson Road all the way down to the river to the north from Minter Road on down. You're gonna have to take out two sections of, uh, those good old hedge trees. And, uh, knowing the people who own that ground, they're not gonna be too happy about it, and they're not gonna wanna cooperate too much. But that's neither here nor there.
So were you pointing out that we're talking, that you think we ought to talk about some more sound barrier?
To the, to the south side of that. Where it narrows there. That's gonna be his access to the property. He's not gonna be able to get trees everywhere. That's the first one I, I can...
But it's only about 50 feet wide right down there where the yellow stubs.
If you have a pointer, I might be able to...
Yeah, come on.
They got a pointer over there, I think, don't they?
Wherever my click is at.
So, so this is the current river that runs around here.
Okay.
So this is, this is all trees around this area.
Okay.
So this is the, this is the property that I own.
Right.
We, our, our plant is up in this area, so we, we, we look to be dredging in this area up here.
Right.
You know, eventually, 30 years from now, we might be, you know, out into this area. This is the access that we have to access over to this. If you follow this straight down is Mattson Road.
Okay.
So this is really narrow anyway. I mean, it's, it's very narrow in there. This is, this is all trees, this is all trees. So I don't know where else we'd really plant many trees. I mean, there, there is no houses back in here. The only, there's a house over here. So the houses on Mattson are, are down in this area, down here.
Okay.
So, I mean, it's pretty buffered back here by any noise that's going on.
Between you and the other houses is only a 50-foot area.
I don't know exactly how wide that is, but it's pretty, yeah, it's, it's pretty narrow right in there.
That's the only area that's not buffered.
Correct.
Okay.
Yeah, the, the rest of it is, is river full of trees all the way around here.
Gotcha.
So there's not. And as far as noise goes, this, this piece of property right here is the one that I, that I own, and it goes all the way down along Mattson here. We, I currently, so Dr. Gary Harbin owned this, I owned this, he owns the ground around there. He wanted this piece of property. We did some, we determined that this piece here has less overburden on, so it's less for us to haul out. So I traded that out. So I own this, Gary owns this currently. Gary is currently putting a pivot up on that piece of property, and it's probably gonna make way more noise than anything we make because it's gonna have an irrigation engine on it. So that's, that noise source there is going to be a lot closer to any houses than anything that we do. You know, what we have on a, on a boat, we have a diesel engine that has a, you know, big muffler. We don't run anything without mufflers. We have, we have people that, you know, we have a person on the, on the dredge operating it, and we fall under MSHA rules, so we have noise requirements that we have to abide by. MSHA comes out, puts on hearing protection on, or monitors on the people and checks that. So we, you know, we, we fall underneath all those rules.
Okay, with that, I am going to close the discussion. For the public, is there any discussion left with the commissioners? With that, I will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve CUP 23-104 with the stipulations already included in...
Conditions of staff.
Yes.
I'll second that.
It's been properly moved and seconded that we approve CUP 23-104 based on the conditions of staff. Is there any discussion? Any of our television people?
No.
Okay, seeing none, I'll bring it to a vote. All those in favor, raise your right hand. Pose same sign. I think we got a unanimous, don't we? I couldn't see what Paul, I couldn't see what Paul did.
I, I voted yes.
Okay.
We had one down.
It's one, okay.
One dissent.
Got you, okay. Motion passes. Thank you for your time. Well, we want to do the easiest one first.
Just keeps getting better, huh?
Whose idea was that?
Okay, uh, CUP 23-103, this is a request by Mountain Peak Energy Storage LLC, also known as Plus Power. Oh, yeah, and you will need to first take this off the table because it was tabled at the last hearing, so you need to make a formal motion to take it off the table.
I'll entertain a motion for that.
Mr. Chairman, I move to, to take, uh, the CUP 23-103 off the table.
I'll second that.
Properly moved and seconded that we remove from the table CUP 23-103 from the last meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose same sign. Motion is passed. We have now brought it back to discussion.
Okay, it's a request by Mountain Peak Energy Storage, also known as Plus Power, to establish a battery-based electrical storage and distribution facility located on a portion of land zoned agricultural in Section 28 Township 15, Range 2, containing approximately 40 acres at the southwest corner of the intersection of McReynolds and Simpson Roads. This is, uh, the existing land use is agricultural. The applicant, uh, is, uh, proposing a battery-based electrical storage facility. This is not going to be a solar facility. The facility will be located in proximity to and work in conjunction with the Evergy Substation that you, and utilize, I believe it's 17 of the 40 acres on the subject parcel. The facility will function as supplemental power for the grid during peak hours of power usage to reduce the possibility of blackouts during these periods. The facility may also provide power during low output phases of alt, uh, alternative energy sources. The county has been coordinating with the applicant as well as fire districts, road and bridge department, emergency management over the past 12 months.
We're good?
The, the applicant is requesting...
I will call a meeting to order of the Saline County Planning and Zoning Commission.
Thought you did that already.
August 22nd, 2020.
The applicant is requesting a modification of the county, uh, six-month post-CUP approval for construction to be extended to three years to allow for acquisition of agreements with service providers for the facility. The applicant has agreed to enter into a road maintenance agreement with performance bond of an amount to be approved by the county engineer. The emergency response plan has been drafted with the assistance of emergency management and the fire districts. A decommissioning plan for this site is also proposed. The life expectancy of the batteries housed within these structures is approximately 30 years with routine maintenance and replacement when needed. Staff has received concerns from the public over the proposed use, primarily safety and how the use will impact the character of the area. Also, uh, some misunderstandings in terms of how this energy would be stored, and there's no, uh, no solar attached to this property. It is strictly tied to the grid. The other comments from other agencies, road and bridge department has been coordinating with the applicant on an agreement to be in effect during construction. Emergency management and the fire districts have met with the applicant to compose the emergency response plan. CUP review criteria, planning commission may approve the conditional use if it complies with the following, as outlined in Section 13-06. The, the use will be a low-impact, low-noise and low-profile facility that will occupy 17 of 40 acres of the subject parcel. The use will be consistent with the existing electrical substation within the vicinity. Generation of traffic during construction phase only. It may not have an adverse impact on existing traffic patterns. Very few residential uses are within the area and is primarily cropland. Item two, due to the predominantly rural locations surrounding the parcel and lower profile of the structures contain, containing the batteries, the design and site planning is consistent with the surrounding area uses. Of item three, the use would provide much-needed infrastructure, supplementing the existing power grid for the region, which will reduce the possibility of random blackouts that have a negative impact on residential and commercial businesses. Staff recommendation is approval of the conditional use with the following conditions. Building permit will not be issued until a commercial permit review has been completed through the city of Salina. Staff, uh, facility must abide by all federal and state environmental laws, including requirements for any disposal of batteries and fire safety. A performance bond in an, in an amount satisfactory to the county engineer with a value adjusted for 2026 construction date with Saline County as beneficiary. Final decommissioning plan and signed road maintenance agreement with performance bond must be submitted prior to building permit being issued. Alternatives would be to approve the request with conditions as listed above. Conditionally approve the request with other conditions as commission may deem necessary, or you can also table or deny the request as well. So with that, I will turn it back over to the chair.
Okay, thank you, staff. I'll bring it to the commission. Any questions for the staff? Seeing none, I will ask the applicant to come forward and address.
Thank you, Chair. We have a presentation today that I think will be helpful just to walk through a little bit more about who we are, and we'll go there. Thank you. Hi, I'm Nate Bell. I'm the manager of project development with Plus Power. I represent and, and deal with the southwest power pole region. So that region covers North Texas all the way up to the Dakotas. Kansas is fully in this. all the way up to the Dakotas. Kansas is fully in this district. This includes our project here today, which is Mountain Peak Energy Storage. I have with me Daniel Brennan as well as Rowan Mitten. Dan is a senior permitting manager and Rowan is the environmental permitting associate. As mentioned in the report, Mountain Peak's been meeting with county and economic development staff since twenty-twenty-one, but we've really increased that discussion, the meetings since the last year and during twenty-twenty-three. As Mr. Hamilton mentioned, this project is just a standalone energy storage project. There's no solar or generation like that associated with this project. This project is also going to be located on privately owned land. We have an option to purchase this property. Therefore, it, you know, it wouldn't require that lease area per the notice that they got. We are here today because we're requesting a conditional use permit per the approval criteria of thirteen point zero six of the Saline County ordinance. Staff recommended approval of this project as a utility distribution plant with several conditions which we accept and would comply with. But I'd like to walk you through a little bit about our project and, and share with the, the group here today. Four topics. Who is Plus Power? What is battery energy storage? About our project here in Saline County, as well as the benefits to the county and its residents. And then fourth, why we believe we've met and exceeded requirements required for approval today. Hopefully I can figure this clicker out. Is there any secret to this? Ah, okay. There is a secret to it. All right, got it. All right. So first, who is Plus Power? Plus Power is a Texas-Houston based headquartered company that develops standalone battery energy storage. We have a hundred and forty employees, many of them who are, are veterans of the industry with decades of experience, working at companies like Nixtera, Tesla, both with and for utility companies, developing, owning and operating, constructing projects like this, but also across the board. Fossil fuel generation, alternative generation. We have ten thousand megawatts in our pipeline across twenty-eight states. So we are operating in, in many, many different communities. And I myself have, have background in, in energy storage. I worked at Tesla for some time and then now I've been at Plus Power. Since Plus Power's been, been in operation, we have three projects that we helped develop, construct, and that are operational right now. One of which we own, which is south of Houston, which is similar in size, and it does the exact same thing that what we're proposing here today. We also have six other projects in construction across the U.S. with the goal of having ten fully operational projects by twenty-twenty-four. In each of these communities, we strive to be a partner, maintain strong relationship because it is our intent to own and operate these facilities for the duration of their life. Okay. So what do I mean when we say battery energy storage systems? So a battery energy storage system is a system of lithium-ion batteries that collect, store and distribute energy derived from the existing electrical grid. So that is just energy coming right off of the grid that's abutting this property. No generation contracts. It is whatever comes off. So that is agnostic to, we could be charging from coal generation, gas generation, solar, wind, anything. At its core, what we're doing is charging the battery during moments of peak supply and when there's less need for the grid. So generally, that could be at night when nobody's, has their lights on. And then you disperse it during moments like today. SPP actually hit their peak of all time today because of this heat dome that we're dealing with right here in the middle of the country. This, this project, the lithium batteries would be in the cells. This is going to be much like any battery in your EVs, your computer, cell phones. They're going to be about the size of a wallet though, so that they're not the, you know, double A batteries. These are housed in modules, and then those modules are housed in racks, which are in an enclosure that is, is unoccupiable. So it's just the batteries in there. No humans can walk in and out of these. We only use, because of our intent to own and operate these for the duration of their life, we're only going to use the best of the best. As you can see on the, on the picture here, one of those is the Tesla in their Megapack two. We'd use that or a comparable tier-one product. But to walk you through a little bit about what that is entailing, each enclosure is thirty feet long, six feet wide and, and nine feet tall. These are going to be on concrete pads, and then surrounding that concrete pad is going to be crushed rock. So it isn't going to be a completely paved or concrete site. It is going to be mostly just crushed rock. Here's the interior of a battery enclosure. Inside of these, you can see the cells, the modules, the racks that I was explaining. But two big, really strong features of, of this particular product is its thermal management system as well as its battery management system. The thermal management system is a closed-loop coolant system that keeps the batteries operating at an efficient and safe temperature. The battery management system actually monitors each individual cell. So down to that singular cell, it'll manage its voltage, its state of charge. Basically, it will monitor it to make sure that each and every piece of this project is operating efficiently. And if it isn't, we will send somebody out there to fix it or be able to turn off the site remotely if there was any immediate cause for concern. So a little bit more about the project we're proposing today. This is on the corner, as mentioned, on McReynolds and Simpson, and it will connect to the existing Evergy substation to the north of it. It's located approximately four miles southeast of Salina. The project is on forty acres. I would say though, it is more so going to be ten acres in size. The fenced area there is ten acres, and then the batteries themselves will be two acres of that. So it's, you know, seventeen if you included the roads maybe, but by and large, I'd, I'd call it an eleven-acre site fenced. The one other feature about this proposal that I'd like to just make note of is that we are well off of the road, and we did this intentionally just to vastly minimize the visual, which we'll show you a rendering of after this. The ordinance calls for you to be a hundred feet from the center line of the road. So you can see actually the substation to the north is about that distance, which is incredibly close. Our project is going to be the, the first portion of it is going to actually be eight hundred forty feet from the center line. So about eight times the required amount. And then the batteries themselves will be over a thousand feet from the center line of the road. Also, just we've, we've done habitat surveys, environmental surveys, and have no cause for concern. But as mentioned, the condition of our approval is to meet all federal and state requirements to that. Here is, as I mentioned, a rendering from the road. As you can see, it's, it's very low profile, being it's, you know, roughly eight hundred plus feet from the middle of the road. In comparison, again, to that substation to the north, which is a similar use, it is, it is vastly minimal. All right. So why this location? So we connect to the Evergy Summit Substation, which is the blue dot on the right-hand side. This substation is what I would call a corridor for energy coming into the community. It is where electricity comes in. It get, gets dispersed to other parts of the, of the county. There's none other like it in the county. This is actually very unique. There, all the other substations are not like this one. So when we, the, the use of this project would be much like I described, where we are looking to charge during moments of peak supply, where there's too much energy on the grid, and distributing it when there's a need for it, but there's not generation needed, or not generation available. This use would go to where it's needed first. So although we, we don't have any choice on to where exactly this energy's going, we are, are working in, in providing an asset to the marketplace. It will, the energy will go to where it's needed first. So it will be used in the immediate area, and then it will go on to the outer communities and outside of the county. So the other benefit of this is the only other solution to things like volatility are just to increase infrastructure like transmission. That's the other way to get energy where it needs to be in other places where it's not. So projects like ours are low-profile. They don't require transmission and are a critical grid infrastructure that is, creates reliability for the surrounding community. Local benefits. So the construction jobs are, are a big deal. We expect forty to seventy during construction. Full-time, long-term, permanent positions, we expect one to three operations and maintenance. So these would be the people who would live in the community and work on the project site. They would be really the only ones coming in and out of the property for the duration of its life. And, you know, the big benefit, I would say, and the differentiator, solar, you know, we discussed we're not the solar project. One key difference is that solar and wind have been historically able to secure various property tax exemptions. We are neither of those. We are not a renewable energy project. We are critical grid infrastructure. So we don't, we, we don't apply for those. So we actually need to pay property tax within the community, and we expect that to be substantial. A project like this, the first slide, it was a, a project on the island of Oahu. For some reference point, that project was two hundred nineteen million dollars. We got financed. This would be a magnitude above that. So we would be paying both sales and use tax off of that as well as ongoing property tax. We'd expect that to be, you know, I'd look for the county assessor to provide, you know, their assessment of it. But our projections report it being in the range of two-plus billion dollars on average over the life of its system. So it's a substantial investment in the community, and that benefit is local. It's going to go to the county. It's going to stay in the county. It's going to go to the school district, and then it's going to go to a variety of other groups, very specific to this location. And we do this without really asking for a whole lot. There's no water required. There's no pollution. The lights are only going to be on when there's somebody on the facility at night where they're needing, need to fix something. Otherwise, those will be off. And low noise. We did do a study that shows any operational project would not be above the ambient levels already existing in the area. And lastly, the support of local reliability for twenty-plus years. So I want to just walk you through again our timeline because I think that's pretty, pretty critical of like why we're here today. So we've been in discussions for a long time, but as part of our process, we are in an interconnection study process. So this is both with the Southwest Power Pool as well as Evergy is a part of this, making sure that our project is compatible with the grid and that there isn't any exorbitant upgrades required. We are about halfway through that. When we expect to have our interconnection agreement next year. But as part of that, we need to make deposits along the way. We need to make significant financial commitments to this to ensure that it continues to move forward. And also, once we move it into project contracting, local various subcontractors and procurement, a lot of these materials are going to be two years out. So batteries are a big one. That takes a long time to get on-site. Transformers, as, as some folks probably know, we're actually seeing a thirty-month timeline. So these are investments we need to make now or in the very near future. And so that is why we're asking for that extension to start construction. It allows us to have a pathway to get to a permit. It's not that this is granting us a permit today. We still have conditions we need to meet. And, but it gives us confidence to continue to invest in the community, to continue to make those financial commitments in our project. Now I'll let Dan wrap it up, but happy to answer any questions after he's done.
Thanks. Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the commission, and members of the public. My name's Daniel Brennan. As Nate mentioned earlier, I'm the senior permitting manager for this project. I'm an attorney admitted to practice in New York, and along with our local Kansas-based counsel at the Pozzelli Law Firm, we've looked very closely at the zoning resolution to determine if and how this project can comply with your local zoning laws. And we've determined that it does and that we need a conditional use permit in order, in order to move forward. So I'm going to briefly discuss the background of the, of the zoning resolution, as well as the reasons why this commission should grant our request for a conditional use permit, and the reasons why we've requested an extension of the deadline to commence construction from, from six months to three years. So just a brief background, this project is located in the agricultural district. Under section thirteen C of the zoning resolution, there's a list of uses that are enumerated for each zoning district. It says whether or not that use is permitted, not permitted or, or allowed by conditional use permit. Our use under thirteen C is a utility distribution plant, and that's allowed by conditional use permit in the AG district. So that's why we're here tonight, requesting a conditional use permit. So the test for a conditional use permit, as I'm sure you're all well aware, has three specific criteria. But I also wanted to direct your attention to a portion of the resolution that discusses the general purpose of a conditional use permit. And that's section thirteen point oh, oh six, and it says that the general purpose of a CUP review is to determine that the proposed use is not reasonably incompatible with the surrounding uses. So I, I want to keep that sort of overall test in mind. I think it's important. That's the reason that we're, we're here tonight, and that's what I think this commission really needs to determine overall. And it'll help you, I think, inform your decision on the specific three criteria, which, which I'll go through briefly next. And it's worth mentioning that my, my job here tonight is, is pretty easy because county staff has already done a very thorough job, I think, in going through all of the criteria and, and putting the, the criteria in a written report and explaining how this project meets those criteria. So I'll just briefly summarize to give you my, my take on this and, and some, a little bit of extra color. So the first criteria, and again, I'm summarizing here, is essentially whether the use is compatible and will not adversely affect the livability and development of the area. So I'll start by saying, we believe that this is essentially the perfect location for a project like this. And the reason that it's a perfect location is it's consistent with the existing uses that are found in the direct vicinity of the project. Now, as Nate mentioned, this property was specifically chosen because of its location next to the existing Evergy substation. In addition to the substation, which borders the project to the north, as Nate mentioned, there's three existing transmission lines that, that go through the area as well. So I would say that the character of the immediate area is already electrical, uh, utilities and electrical equipment. So, so the, the use that we're proposing here is consistent with, with that existing character. So obviously, we know that there are other uses in the wider area. There's, there's certainly agricultural, and there, there are some, some homes as well. But the project is also consistent, the proposed use is consistent with those other uses as well. Um, as Nate mentioned, this, this is essentially, um, uh, an unmanned project, so there will not be a significant amount of traffic, or almost any traffic at all. Once construction is complete, there won't be cars coming in and out every day, so it won't have an impact on traffic. It won't have, it won't have any noise impacts. Um, as you've seen from, from our, uh, photo simulations, it will have almost no aesthetic impacts at all. Um, in fact, because of the height of the, of the, uh, the battery enclosures, it will be almost, um, not visible from the public right-of-way. I'd go as far as to say that unless you're already aware of the existence of the project, a casual passerby might, might not even know it's there. The only thing that you can see from the road, from, from that photo simulation, is the existing substation and the existing, uh, transmission lines, not the, the, the project, um, that we're proposing. And also, I'll say that this project will have absolutely no, um, impact on farming whatsoever. So that brings us to the second criteria, um, and again, I'm, I'm summarizing here, and second criteria is essentially whether the use will provide a, a functional environment, and whether it will be reasonably attractive in the context. Um, so the functional environment, uh, part of that test, I think we've, we've clearly met. The project will, will enhance the grid, it will allow the grid to provide, uh, reliable energy as soon as it's completed and long into the future, and that will provide for a functional community. One of the, the things the code asks you to look at are, are residential, shopping, and, and civic uses. Well, you can't have, you can't have, uh, homes, businesses, or a functioning government without electricity. So this project will clearly enhance the functionality of the community. The, the other part of that second criteria is whether it's reasonably attractive in the context. Uh, I, I look at those renderings and I, I see a beautiful project, but, uh, maybe that's just me. I, I spend a lot of time, uh, thinking about these projects, but we're not asking you to find that, that this project is beautiful. What we're asking you to find is that it's reasonably attractive in the context. And so the context of this project is that there's an existing substation directly next door, and there's existing transmission lines that are at a significant height. The substation next door is also, as Nate mentioned, is only approximately twenty feet from the road, whereas our project will start, uh, a little over eight hundred feet from the road. So in that context, um, this is a reasonably attractive project, because in fact, it won't really be visible from the road. So I think we've met the second part of that, that criteria number two as well. So finally, uh, the, the third criteria, again, paraphrasing, is, is, uh, whether the, the proposed use will enhance the surrounding area or provide an essential service. I think under, under the zoning resolution, we only need to prove one of those two things, but we've proven, we've proven both. The project will enhance, um, the surrounding area by helping the public utility to provide reliable, um, electricity to both the residences, agricultural uses, and every other use, um, in, in the community. All of the uses in the community require electricity. So we're enhancing, um, we're enhancing the community by providing that service. Um, and then the second is whether we're providing an essential service. And of course, um, electricity, if anything, is defined as an essential service. Electricity, uh, would certainly be fi- defined as an essential service. So, uh, we've clearly, we've clearly, uh, met that test too. Um, but I, I wanna tie back into that original, the original sort of overall test that's found in the purpose section of the conditional use permit, which is that you're to determine whether the use is not reasonably incompatible with the surrounding uses. So again, this project fits in well with the existing infrastructure in the area. It won't have any impacts on the residences, and it won't have any impacts on the agriculture. What it will do is enhance the community with reliable electricity, and it will provide some of the other benefits that Nate, that Nate talked about earlier, which is it will provide direct tax revenue increase that will go right to the community. That is also a benefit that this commission is allowed to consider in evaluating our request. Um, the last thing I wanna touch on is, is our, uh, request for an extension. Um, as Nate mentioned, um, we are subject to the, um, interconnection process with the Southwest Power Pool. The interconnection process is required by federal law, and we can't com- commence construction until it's complete. Um, we expect that that process will take three to five years. So the code, or the zoning resolution says, by default, the termination date of any conditional use permit is six months. But it clearly gives this commission the authority to determine a longer period of time for termination, if it's appropriate. Six months might be appropriate, uh, for an ordinary development project, a relatively simple construction, or like a, a home or, or a business. But here, it's not appropriate. Here, it's impossible to comply with because we have to go through the, um, the interconnection process. And, and frankly, because of the complexity, um, and the scale of, of the project that we're proposing. So that's the reason why we're requesting, um, an extension of, of the termination, and, and this commission has the authority to do it. Plus Power appreciates the time and consideration of this commission. We appreciate the time, um, of the members of the public that have come out tonight, and we certainly appreciate the time of staff who's done a very, very thorough review. Um, the, the staff report sets out, in addition to, um, the, the criteria which I went over, sets out findings of fact, and the staff report sets out a recommendation that this commission approve the conditional use permit with certain conditions. Uh, we don't object to any of those conditions. Um, we think that everything in that staff report is essentially correct, and, and we would, uh, strongly encourage this commission to rely on that staff report, and even, uh, potentially adopt it or adopt a, a portion of it as your, uh, resolution approving our project with conditions. And with that, I know I've been talking for a while, and, and Nate was as well. Um, we'd be happy to, to take any questions, um, that the commission has, take questions from members of the public, or address any concerns that they might have.
Thank you to both of you. Very, very good explanation, good presentation. I'll ask the commission, do they have any questions for either of our presenters? Before I open it up.
Yes, for Dan, if, if I could. For Dan, uh, you talk about an extension for three to five years. Does that mean you may take up to five years even before you begin construction?
That-
Possibly?
That's correct, although our request tonight is simply that we get a three-year extension. We think it's possible that the interconnection process could take up to five years, but right now, we're just simply asking for three years. We think that there's a, we have a pretty good shot of getting it done in that period of time. If not, we would be, uh, required to come back to the commission and ask for an extension.
Okay, thank you.
Are you dealing with this in other locations?
Um, can you clarify?
Building something like this in other locations?
Oh, absolutely, um-
And you're taking three to five years? Imagine the government taking that long. I'm just having trouble with that.
There are some, there are some part, parts of the country, uh, uh, Mr. Chairman, that have a, a, an abbreviated process. Um, actually, Kansas, uh, it had, has, we think, a very good process. We think it's in- important to, to have local buy-in on the, on the project. Um, as far as how long it's gonna take SPP to decide whether we can connect, um, and what upgrades we need to make for their grid, I'm not gonna, not gonna comment on that, 'cause we, we need to play nice with them, so. But your point is well taken, sorry.
Yeah, okay, got you. Okay, good.
How much does one of those modules weigh?
It's, each enclosure is, uh, sixty-seven thousand pounds. So it's about, about a fully loaded truck, uh, once, once it's on there.
Could you say that again?
Oh, yeah, yep, sorry, sorry. Uh, it's about sixty-seven thousand pounds, one enclosure. So one of those is typically per truck, uh, which is roughly a fully loaded truck.
So then, you said there was gravel base underneath the pads?
Uh, underneath, uh, the pads would actually be in the ground. Um, I think typically, they're gonna go about two feet down, and then they actually have, uh-
Is that thick?
Yeah, then they have piles that go, uh, deeper into the ground itself.
And then they're surrounded by gravel.
Correct, that's right. So most of the site is actually gonna be gravel. The, the pad itself will be concrete, um, within, um, steel pi- uh, piles.
How deep are your piles?
Uh, I'd say four feet.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yep.
Good.
You'll probably have fencing around that for security's sake.
A- absolutely. It'll be, um, fenced, um, and that's actually required by the National Electric Code, but, uh, by our investors as well. Um, so we would look to use a fence probably similar to the one at the, um, substation, so it'd be a chain-linked fence. Um, that would be locked, uh, aside from staff personnel, um, you know, emerg- emergency or, or local, um, folks that need it. Um, and one other safety feature that I would say, in terms of just, um, the fence, is that anytime a enclosure is actually opened, it automatically turns off. If it isn't authorized, it has a, a sense that, hey, this shouldn't be open, turns off. There's no way somebody can start hammering away at it. Um, these sites will act, will also have, um, some, uh, security on it as well, um, to monitor the site, to ensure that if anybody does try to get on-site, uh, we be notified and, and would alert, um, the local authorities about it.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other questions for the applicant? With that, I'll open it up to the public for comment. Um, I will remind you that, um, five minutes. Limit your comments to five minutes, please.
Mr. Chairman, it won't take five minutes for me. Uh, my name is Mitch Robinson. I'm executive director of the Salina Community Economic Development Organization. We are the counties, um, the cities, the Chamber of Commerce, and the Airport Authority's Economic Development Arm. And we've been fortunate to work with Plus Power. I looked it up in my records, it was, uh, July twenty-ninth, twenty-twenty-one, uh, when we had our first contact with the company. So we have been working very closely with them, working with, arranging the meetings, uh, talking with other people in the community that would have some impact, some interest in this project. So we're in full support of the company, we support their application to the commission, and, um, would be more than happy to answer any questions anybody have. These are your experts, they know what it's talk, they're talking about. Uh, it's something that, over this course of time, the project has not really changed. It's been on the same course from day one, first time we've met. Uh, but I, I can make some comments about our government taking a long time at the federal level. It's unfortunately, uh, just part of the nature of the beast, uh, and part of the process that when they first came to me and said, well, you know, this is not gonna be overnight. Well, I said, well, how long will it be? Oh, five, six years, something like that. So that's, it's a little longer than we get used to, to dealing with. But again, it's a major project, major investment in the county. That will impact the school, all the other taxing entities. So, uh, we're in very, very strong support of it. Thank you all.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Other public comment?
My name is Wade Waddle. I live at forty-twenty-eight East McReynolds, about a quarter mile east of this location. My biggest concerns are, but wear on my chest, I'm a member of Fire District Number One, which this project does not lie in. However, I would expect that it would be a mutual aid with Fire District Number Two, very much like Southeast Salinas. Um, and speaking for my district and what we have to offer generally, um, through the day, from my experience, is that the last fire I went to in the middle of the day, we got six firefighters, in, in six trucks. Uh, we're not the only agency that, that is seeing manpower shortages or equipment shortages. And I don't believe that we have what we need to deal with a fire at that location or around that location. Um, every time we have a big lightning storm, we get multiple fires working our way across the county. And, and some of the popular targets are the electrical grids, the oil barracks, oil extraction units. Um, and then that's very taxing on a, a group of volunteer firefighters that are, quite honestly, we don't have any professional firefighters. We're all, we all do jobs other than firefighting full-time. Um, and, and there's not a, a sufficient water source that I know of at that corner. Um, my house is the end of the line. I can tell you the water pressure's not, not awesome. So, um, I don't believe that from the, the first responder that we have the capabilities that we would need to do for, for this project or any other projects that come in the future that we, that we're not allowed to talk about. Anything that would follow in this area, because it's such a prime location for, for adding to the grid, I don't believe that we have the, the resources to, to deal with emergencies at that location. And that's my, my opinion and not the opinion of Fire District Number One or its board. Just, just as a member that lives a quarter mile away, that would probably be the first person there. I'm the, I'm the best firefighter that lives a, a quarter mile away from that location, like, so, so that's, that's my opinion. Thank you.
Sir, before you leave the stand, do you have mutual aid with Salina Fire Department?
It, it depends on the circumstances and what, what we need and what they have available to offer at that very moment. Salina Fire has a responsibility for their city first. So if they need the rescue truck in the city first, the city gets it. If they need their hazmat in the city, the city's gonna get it first.
I understand. I was a-
We'll get, we'll, we, everybody helps everybody.
Right.
Regardless of where the firefight, we will go to Ellsworth if we need to help Ellsworth. Everybody will come help us if we need help.
I just asked because I didn't know how it works here. Um, I was a, a volunteer firefighter at, uh, Station Eighty-Six in Marathon County, Wisconsin. And, um, we had the benefit of central fire in our county seat. And I was just wondering if you got support from them, or if you're kinda out there on your own.
We, we absolutely, we request support in route if we need it. We, we requested support in route to a structured fire. We, we weren't even there yet, and we were already asking for help. So, so we have a good mutual aid support system, but if multiple things are going on at the same time, that is very taxing on... If you have two districts southwest, and you have two districts southeast, we start backfilling, but eventually, we, we're, we're requesting-
So we, we had a problem. Up there, water resources are plentiful. But I'm wondering down here, how far do you think that pos- site is? And this is your estimation. How far do you think that site is from the closest, lo- the closest? What, fire hydrant?
The, the hydrant location, I'm not s- I'm not sure. I, I would say Mener or Gypsum. Um, we can get some water from some places. The Church on Magnolia has pretty good water pressure. Um, but we're traveling with tankers.
Right.
Constantly.
That's what we use too, when I was doing it.
That's, we don't even have, we don't even have a, a, a truck that we would do that with. The closest structured fire vehicle that, that District One has comes out of Garfield Station over in Dixon County.
I didn't realize that that was the situation. And where I was at, we could, we could drop a sump over the edge of a bridge and just suck water out of a river. And I don't know if that's not an option.
We try not to do that, 'cause it ruins our stuff, but there's, there's, there's other resources we can tap, but i- it's not just attacking a, a fire at that location. There's, there's areas around that that are, we're gonna have to give up to protect the houses and, and, and these important resources. Uh, there's gonna be some give and take.
I hear you're saying, and I appreciate-
Our volunteer numbers are low. Our, our sheriff's department numbers are, are kinda low right now, with a lot of vacancies. So security response is gonna be affected too by other things going on in the county, in my opinion.
Well, thank you for indulging my curiosity.
Mr. Chairman, um, we're prepared to address that comment. Would your preference be that we wait till the end of all the public?
I'm gonna ask that, the applicant, do you normally require water on-site?
We do not, and in fact, um, if the commission, if the commission would indulge us, we've actually brought, uh-
Would you come to the podium, please, so we can get you?
We've brought with us, um, one, a consultant from the ESRG Company, Mr. Brian Shoal. Um, and I would request that Mr. Shoal be given an opportunity to address the commission, um, regarding, uh, fire safety for these, for, for the project.
Good. Brian?
Brian, could you give the commission just a general background on, on your experience and what your role with this project is?
Yeah, so, uh, Brian Shoal, I'm actually, uh, I'm a deputy farm marshal in the, uh, Phoenix area, uh, for twenty-three years. And for the last seven years, I've been working on codes and standards to deal with batteries. And the nice thing about these batteries is they are not occupiable. And the nice thing about these batteries is they are not occupiable. We don't have to send people in. We don't have to send our firefighters in to pull somebody out. They're designed to just consume themselves, and that's the best part about these things. We don't have to put water in these things. We let them consume themselves, and that's the benefit of these. And I am here to keep my firefighters and the community safe. And I wouldn't be here if I didn't believe in this product. So that's why I'm here today.
And Brian, what, what resources, um, does your organization have available for the local fire, fire department here to assist with, um, with training and, and things of that nature for this project?
Yeah, so that's one of our, our goals and our partnerships here is we've already actually met with the fire districts out here. And we were here to help with writing the emergency response plan. We're gonna help with all the training of all the firefighters in the whole area that may respond to this incident. So we're here to partner with them and partner with the firefighters to make sure they understand what they need to do in case there is an incident here.
Would you recommend water on site?
Um, the way the code reads, water is not required on site because they're not occupiable. If it was a building like we used to do in, in the past,
Right.
we would actually have hydrants around there. These are not occupiable, and that's the big difference. They're just a cabinet.
Okay. Thank you.
So to, to help somebody out like, like me that would have flunked science class, if the teacher wouldn't have been real easy. Well, what I'm hearing is if one of these batteries catches fire, it'll burn up everything on the inside of it, but it won't spread outside?
Exactly correct. And what that's called is the UL ninety-five forty testing, ninety-five forty-eight testing, where we actually test each individual cell to see if we can get it into thermal runaway. And then we go, um, to the, um, to the modules and then to the full installation level. These battery systems, we couldn't even get them to catch fire. We actually had to put a propane torch in there just to let it catch fire to see what it does. But they're designed not to propagate, going from one cell to another cell. And they're basically, um, consume themselves, and that's why the, this is the best design, and that's why I'm up here.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. You're right, we deal with lightning.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right.
Don't run away. Don't run away. Other comment?
Well, I'm, I'm Gary Olson, and I'll try to get all the questions in, and then you can try to answer them all at the same time. I will just make note that my brother rents some ground right beside yours. And, um, your neighbor to the east of the ground we farm, they've been such a good neighbor. I got my combine stuck in a drought the other day harvesting wheat. And so hopefully you guys will be a better neighbor than that. And we don't have water running off onto the property to the north. Um, one question here is the noise. Do you have some studies that you can hand out tonight so we can look at them to convince ourselves that there's not gonna be any, any impact on the noise in the neighborhood? Because, um, I've been over there, um, farming, and those other items that are out there right now make a lot of noise. And so we'd like to listen to what you have to say about that. Uh, another observation I have is, um, do you have any idea, based on the number you're proposing tonight, how many houses could be helped? Is it anywhere close to thirty-five hundred, five thousand, twenty-five thousand, thirty-five hundred? Is that pretty close?
Uh, no, it's much more than that.
Like fifty thousand?
Uh, yeah.
Okay.
The hundreds of thousands.
Okay.
And it includes-
In, in times of shortage?
Yes.
Okay. And then another observation I had, because I did a Google search, and ever since I did that darn Google search, the only thing that shows up on my feeds is solar, 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 and, um, batteries, 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 batteries. And I've learned more about batteries than I ever wanted to know about. And so, um, I guess I'm just curious, and I know we can't talk about solar tonight, and we can't talk about, um, these wind turbine things, but basically anything that generates electricity can be hooked to these, your batteries, right? I mean, it, it doesn't matter what kind of energy it is.
Address the commission.
Huh?
Address the commission.
Oh, sorry, Dwayne. Don't mean to make you mad. So, okay. But I think they're gonna answer that question eventually. Um, so I didn't quite catch, um, are you hoping to do more someday, or is this like one project and done? Do you have future plans to do a whole bunch more someday? Um, you know, I, I didn't quite catch, you said two-hundred-and-nineteen million, and I wasn't quite sure if that was this project or it's gonna be more than two-hundred-and-nineteen thousand. I, I kinda got lost in there because I just didn't hear, and I wasn't listening. But you said it was gonna increase the tax revenue to the county by two million dollars, I believe. And, um, obviously, uh, you know, with everything and expenses going up, we need all this money to improve roads and, and fund different projects. You know, two million dollars would be nice, but, um, it is, is what it is. Um, as far as a couple other observations I have, one thing that I wonder about, and, um, you know, I know that the, the Chamber has been working with you guys since, um, twenty twenty-one. And I don't know how many other companies are out there that does this. You know, usually when proposals get brought in front of county commissioners, city commissioners, planning and zoning, um, usually a little bit of research has been done. I guess I'd ask, um, staff and, um, Mr. Hamilton, have you considered and done research on other companies? And then lastly is the decommissioning of these once they have their useful life. And I learned a little bit about, I think they last for like twenty-five, thirty years. And so, um, and I agree, where you're proposing to put them, they won't even be seen from the road. And so, you know, that would be a, a plus. But, um, I just can't fathom that. And you've got your expert here, so I can't deny and counteract what he said. But when I've seen fires happen, they happen. And, um, they happen in a big way. And so, you know, it, it, it's hard for me to believe that these things would burn, and it's burned themselves. And I never did really hear how many you're planning to put on here. I guess I'd be curious as to the number of them. And, you know, I heard that there's, each one weighs sixty-seven thousand pounds, and you're gonna put them on, um, um, you know, two-foot things and, you know, you don't have rock around them and all that. But how many of them are you really planning to put on your eleven acres that you want to develop? Would be another question that I guess I'd like to have an answer to. And, um, you know, it sounds to me like you're gonna have to rewrite the code tonight because, um, and I think, I thought it took like public comment to do that. And, um, you know, every time that, when the predecessors were around here, you couldn't change nothing without informing the public and saying, we're gonna have comment period. What do you think about this change? And all of a sudden, we're just gonna, voila, we're gonna go from six months to a three-to-five-year project? I mean, that just doesn't seem right without a little bit of public comment on that topic. It just sounds like we're making up the rules as we go to me. So I guess that's my comments. Have I used five minutes yet, Dwayne?
You got two left.
I have two left?
You can sing us a song.
Seriously? Oh.
You have to tell them, do you, man?
There you go.
I don't sing very well. Well, I, I got a little bit more then on the-
Go ahead, cause then I'm gonna bring the applicant back up and have him address all those.
I know, I understand. So I have a little bit more on the noise ordinance because it says here that, um, I think you adopted chapter thirteen, um, under the Saline County Code ordinances, under thirteen A eight dash oh nine. Does that sound familiar? I mean, that's what it says here. Um, um, it was referenced on section one point three on page two of thirty-one. Um, it was a DUDIC report generated out of California. It was approved on August twenty-second, twenty twenty-three. And, you know, I can sit here and tell you that my tractor doesn't make noise, but I still get the sheriff coming out and visiting me when I farm too close to Salina at five-thirty in the morning. And so, you know, what's the noise of my tractor? Well, what's the noise of these, um, battery-powered? Um, I guess it's called BES, um, items. And, um, I guess I would just like to see some information and recommend highly that you do not vote for this until the citizens that are here tonight have had a chance to, um, so-called this in. I understand there's a lot of miscommunication, but I wanna go on record tonight, even though I'm not allowed to talk about solar plants, that if we approve this and I hear one comment out of anybody in the future that says, hey, we already got these guys on board so we can have a solar plant and solar-powered energy here, I'm gonna lose it. Because I think that's where we're headed. Thank you.
Applicant, would you address those questions?
Thank you for the questions. Um, and it was a pleasure speaking earlier as well. Um, I think I got them all down here, but, um, the sound in the area we do address, we included a study that we did, uh, with a third party. So they actually monitored the site. Um, they put, um, basically receptors, um, in the area to see is there gonna be any, uh, what's the ambient noise? Um, and basically, the high level is that our project will not increase any ambient noise whatsoever. So not only would there be an adverse effect, but we would meet any, um, sound ordinance, which I don't know if there is a particular standard, um, in the code, but we wouldn't cause any harm to the community. And that is in our, our application, uh, that study.
What is the ambient?
Uh, the-
What's out there now?
Yeah, what's happening today. Yeah. Um, and that's a wa- largely do as well. It's not like these are not making noise, but we're so far off the, the property line, which was done intentionally to minimize all of these impacts. Uh, the energy that we're using on the site, it's, it's agnostic. We're tying into the grid, so whatever the grid has, we're gonna take. Um, and we're really keying in on those signals of, uh, oversupply and then peak demand. That's what we're looking for. There's no, we can't differentiate, hey, this is a, this electron, this is another electron, let's take those and only use, um, it, it is whatever's on the grid. Um, so we will provide that grid infrastructure regardless of what's, um, in the local area. Um, and we see that need today. Um, our project was well, uh, in development before any discussion, um, beyond uh, the, the project that we're talking here today. Um, the, the discussion or that question about one and project and done, um, what we're showing today is the, the maximum area that we'd be able to use. Um, we did show a larger design footprint. Um, it could be smaller than that. Um, I could see that happening. Um, but we wanted to show, here's the, the potential biggest, um, area that we'd wanna use, which is about eleven acres, um, in the fenced area. Again, that's a smaller footprint for the enclosures themselves. Um, we would not be able to increase the capacity or expand this site without additional approvals. Um, and I can tell you, we don't have any intent of doing that. Um, the, the project itself is sized, uh, to the grid, what we believe is gonna be the optimal, um, sizing of this project to have the biggest impact. Um, for us to go through that process and to add on more, it, it, I don't foresee that being something we'd, we'd consider. Um, but again, anything we would, would still have to go through you guys, uh, for approval. Um, you know, we, this is a private company doing business with a private landowner. So we, we have, uh, our capital, and we found a great site. Um, it is, it is a piece of land that we are gonna buy from a landowner who wants to sell it to us. Um, if other projects or competitors want to look at the area, um, clearly there's other folks, um, looking at it. Um, but we believe we're the best. Um, we're, we're pure first, and these substations are exorbitantly expensive to expand. So our project, we believe we have an avenue that is feasible within a project. At a certain point, you can only connect so much without expanding and increasing the size of those substations. Um, I don't foresee, you know, projects after us, um, not having to do that. So, um, definitely, I think we are the best. We found this location first. Um, we've, we've been able to get it this far. Um, but again, it is a private company, private, private, bringing private capital to improve the local area. Um, and then decommissioning, um, that is one of our conditions. Uh, we've agreed to enter into a decommissioning agreement. Uh, this would be, um, required, uh, to have a third-party engineer actually take a look and provide a cost figure for removal and, uh, reclamation of the site. Um, again, we are gonna be owning this property, so it is in our best interest to make sure it's gonna get cleaned up. Um, we're, we're not leasing the property. This isn't something that we can walk away from. Um, it is very much uh, an investment for our community, or for our company. Um, and then again, in terms of just the size of the project, it would be that two acres of, of project, um, enclosure area. Uh, this particular design, I believe, has three-hundred-seventy-six of them. Um, again, I think that's probably the highest amount. Um, if anything, we could see a s- a slight reduction in that. Um, just based on, um, what we feel is gonna be the optimal, uh, design, uh, at the time of construction. But it wouldn't expand above what we're showing today.
And one thing to add, Nate, could you tell the commission, if there were another, let's say hypothetical solar project that was approved down the road, and it required, um, expansion of that substation, would any of the costs of expanding the substation be borne by the community? Or would that be borne by the solar developer?
No, and that's, that's a good point. Um, the process we go through, uh, much like us taking the burden of decommissioning any road, uh, usage, um, that's all on the project. There's nothing that we're asking the county to foot the bill for. Um, the interconnection agreement, that is a good, um, thing you bring up. We are private capital entering into this agreement, um, with Southwest Power Pool, um, who also would be, um, a partner with Evergy, who would be the transmission owner. Um, we, as the generation owner, would be subject to all of those costs. So that'd be nothing that the community would bear, um, all paid for by the project.
The question was asked about how many homes, businesses would it service?
Yeah, so it's a lot. Um, yeah, it's a lot. Um, so for some, uh, reference, our project, uh, is, could have the potential capacity output of three-hundred-and-fifty megawatts.
Which means nothing to one, but to one hundred.
Yeah, it's a good.
What's he talking about?
It's a lot. Uh, yeah, yeah. So three-hundred-and-fifty megawatts. Um, again, the, the design we're showing is four hours. Um, the duration question was just brought up. Um, that could be as low as two. Um, so it'd be somewhere, but we're showing the four hours again to just show you, here's the biggest design we would possibly look to, uh, to do. Um, but it is a lot. Um, the, the, uh, the county, um, their load is typically gonna be in the range of two-hundred to three-hundred megawatts. So this project would be above that. Um, so it should substantially support, um, you know, times of reliability and increasing that, uh, benefit to the local area.
So if the main grid went down, you would be powering?
It would, it would power the grid. Um, again, we don't have-
For so many hours?
Say, yes, correct.
Days?
It would be hours.
Hours.
I'm taking it, that's depending on usage at the time.
It would be. Yep. So it would be dependent on usage, but we would anticipate, um, the little, we, you know, it is a four-hour duration, so it would run for four hours. It could go, you know, beyond that. Um, again, it could be as low as two. Um, but, uh, that energy, we don't have a say in where it actually goes.
Sure.
But we would put it into the grid, and it where, it would go directly to where it's needed most, closest to where it is. It wouldn't be able to hop over-
The entire county, more than the county?
It would be more than the county, I would say. I would say it would benefit the local area the most, and then the benefits would then dissipate out, um, depending on the event, depending on the usage. So, but the main benefits are gonna be seen local. Um, the tax benefits are gonna be a hundred percent local.
Sure.
So.
I think we've answered those questions. I'm gonna open it back up to the public comment. Who wants their five minutes?
My name's Tony Johnson. I live here in Salina, and I'll just say, first off, I'm against this. I mean, this outfit was founded in San Francisco. They've got rolling blackouts and brownouts, but they're gonna come out here to flyover country to put their battery station. Now, why is that? Cause it's cheap out here, you know? It's not a, it's a temporary solution to a permanent problem. You know, if you wanna really make a difference, let's turn that thousand acres into a power plant. Coal, nuclear, gas turbine, I don't care. They're all more efficient and provide way more benefit than wind and solar ever thought about being. You know, and as far as the fire protection, you know, when it takes thirty thousand gallons of water to put out a Tesla, I have a hard time believing that these things are gonna self-combust and stay right there. You know, this is a grift. They're gonna buy low, sell high, and in twenty years, they're packing up and leaving. That's all there is to it. Th- this has no, there's no benefit. They're gonna employ one to three people? What's that? You know, and I'll be honest, I've lived here since two thousand twelve. I've yet to have my lights go out. I've yet to have my lights go out unless a line was down from wind or a storm. So they can talk about reliable electricity all they want. We've got reliable electricity. The only thing that would improve upon that is more plants, you know? Where they started life in California, they've regulated them out of existence, and now they're scrambling with one nuclear plant left to try to keep the whole state afloat. Because they, they invested in all this smoke and mirror power generation that does not work. I'm sorry, it does not work, so, anyway, that's my take on it.
Good comments, thank you. Anyone else? Come to the podium. I will remind you, we will adjourn at 10 o'clock.
All right.
I know, you have five minutes.
I'm Mike Jensen. I live out 5694 K-4 Highway. These things, as just said, are a joke. They want to spend hundreds of millions of dollars for two to four hours' worth of electricity. We've all seen on TV Teslas blowing up. Many of us have seen car batteries blow up. When they blow, they blow. They're not going to be contained in this little units. And all these people around here that live there are going to have to suffer through the smoke and the horrible nasty gunk that they put out. They've got a place right over here. If these things are so great, they got a brand-new substation right by the old Phillips plant or Great Plains, and that land's for sale, and it's already zoned industrial. This land will have to be zoned industrial. This thing is a real joke. They're coming out here and they're blowing smoke where smoke shouldn't be blowing, and they're going to try to kill some people because they don't want to deal with the city. Thank you.
Can we have an opportunity to respond to that comment?
Sure.
Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Just on, on the comment about the Tesla vehicles, and I'm sure we've all seen the videos of that. Just because they're manufactured by Tesla doesn't mean they're the same technology as we're proposing for your community today. As Ms., excuse me, as, as Brian explained to you earlier, these battery systems are designed with redundancies for safety, and they're designed in a way that, that any thermal runaway event will self-consume. Tesla automobiles, electric vehicles, are not designed in the same way, and they're not subject to the same rigorous testing under the UL 9540A that our proposed battery system is. And so I don't want to confuse the two, the electric vehicles and, and the battery system that we're proposing for your community. Just because they're manufactured by the same company doesn't mean that they're, they're the same technology or the same design. They're not. Thank you.
Thank you. Other public comment?
I'll just give my comments, just a matter of the county engineer regarding the, the road and bridge perspective on it. You know, our biggest concern would be during construction and during the demolition, we would probably, we would require the haul route to be, to come off K-4 and then up the one mile on Simpson. We wouldn't let the materials come in, you know, from the north. And then we would have some kind of a road maintenance agreement, which we, I briefly talked with them, you know, about that before, and they're, they're willing to do, so. Other than that, we don't, we don't see much of an issue.
Thank you. Other public comment?
Scott Dixon, Salina, Kansas. The, the big benefit to this, that I gather, is tax revenue, correct?
Yes.
And we're asking for a three-to-five-year extension before they start building. When do they start paying taxes?
That's asking the county appraiser.
Maybe after, once it's up and running.
It has to be up and running first. So, so we're going to wait three to five years, and maybe you'll still be in business, maybe you won't be, but we don't collect anything.
That's for the county assessor to decide. It's not our, it's not our decision when we start paying taxes. It's not the decision of this commission either.
But we don't get any taxes until it's up and running.
I don't know that. That's up to the, that's up to the county assessor.
Okay. And correct me if I'm wrong, but those batteries burn at like eight or 900 degrees? When they start on fire, a lithium-ion battery?
Address the commission, please.
Do the batteries burn at eight or 900 degrees?
I'll bring the backup.
Okay.
Bring your questions, and I'll bring them back up.
That's it.
Would you mind answering the question?
Yeah, please address the commission.
Thank you, Chair, members of the commission. Yes, they do burn very hot, but, you know, like we've been saying, these are totally different than your electric vehicles, your micro-mobilities, those kind of things. These are designed that they don't propagate from one to another, so that high heat consumes it, and that's actually the benefit.
Thank you. Other public comment? We've got 30 minutes.
You're not saving his say any time.
Good evening.
We're leaving at 10 o'clock regardless.
My name's Danette Toon. I live in Mentor, Kansas. And I have been in economic development, so I appreciate the project. I have, my late husband was in the electric utility business in transmission and distribution. So I, I have some understanding of what you're doing. I think the issue, though, for a lot of us here tonight is, what is this really going to lead to long-term? As the gentlemen have shared, this started out as a substation out there. We now have three transmission lines. Now we're adding the potential of a battery plant to hold the electricity until it's needed to go back into the grid. I will say that I saw a news article today, I think it was, no, dated the 21st, excuse me, yesterday, that Evergy asserts it has enough capacity to handle sweltering Kansas heat. So I think in terms of excess capacity needed at this stage, not that we won't need it at some point in the future, but at this point in time, Evergy is saying they're, they're fine, even in the 110 weather. So I would just say that as somebody who lives in this community, somebody who has land in this area, it, it is a real concern. I have had several companies have come to me with potential solar projects. It's, it's out there. It's not necessarily a function of this particular project, but those are the realities of, of the things that we are facing and the things that we have to consider as the people that live in this area and will continue to live in this area. So I do want to say that I appreciate the project. I appreciate economic development, but I do have some concerns, and I think it, it definitely warrants more information, definitely on my part, and, and I'm somebody who probably has a pretty good understanding just based on, on the background that I have. So thank you for coming tonight, and thank you for letting us talk.
Thank you.
May I have an opportunity to respond, Mr. Chairman?
Any other public comment? I'm waiting.
Hi, my name's Lou Roncase. I live in Gipson, 769, or 769 East K-4 Highway. I'm, I'm listening to a lot of these comments from, from the farmers and the people that live out there, and, and the biggest one I keep hearing over and over again is they're all worried about solar fuels coming. Well, number one, Kansas is one of the worst damn states in the, in the Union to have solar power. Plain and simple. I had solar power in California. I had a 5 KW system for a whole bunch of power. I need a 5 KW system for $150 bill in Kansas. That's the difference between California and Kansas. I've read your system, I've read your reports, I've read your audio. I read everything that you guys put out, and they've got their ducks in a row. They've, they've, you've asked the questions, they've answered everything. The fire, it's all this, it's all the same. I blew up things for the Navy for 30 years. Lithium-ion batteries are a hazard, but they're not anything like what they're describing, like in a car. Their, their technology is totally different. So anyway, I, I recommend moving this project forward. It's, it's a, it's a smart thing to do.
Thank you for your comments.
I'm Teresa Swisher. I live at 4853 East McReynolds Road. And we, as the Walnut Township Board, which is where this is located, presented to the planning and zoning department today, located at 229 North 9th Street in Salina, Kansas, two emergency walnut ordinances at 351 this afternoon. These emergency ordinances were created due to Seline County not having applicable noise and solar slash battery energy storage system ordinances. Please place the notes of the minutes, please place the notes of these minutes in, excuse me, please place the notes in your minutes that we delivered those ordinances.
And they are entered into the record. I've got them here.
Thank you. Any other public comment? You've got two minutes left. You already had three. No.
What's this going to do to our electric bill? Because these guys aren't doing this for, out of the goodness of their heart. So this is going to jack all of our electric bills up for two hours' worth of electricity if the grid goes down. Big deal. This thing should not go through. It is not healthy for us. The people out there, that if lightning hits one of them deals and it blows up, lithium ion will produce a lot of dangerous gas. If you have a lithium-ion battery and you get in an airplane, you can't put it in your luggage. You've got to have it up. So they do blow up, they do cause fires, no matter what they say. And it will burn through, it will blow up their little container units. You've all seen car batteries blow up or seen remnants of a car battery blowing up. It does a lot of damage, and it'd be like dynamite going off in those things.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
I have 20 seconds left.
15.
All right, five then. Well, I don't think I've really got around to asking this question. And this was probably the most important one. If they came in here and said they already had an agreement with Evergy and they're ready to get going, I'd be probably a little bit different mindset. But to my knowledge, from what little I've heard and talked to them, I don't think they have any agreements in place. They just got to dream out here of passing all this stuff and getting it all done, changing your rules and regulations here, and starting in 2025 or 2026, which magically matches up really close with something else that may be going on. So I, I think we need to table this and get our ducks in a row. I think you all need to look at the ordinance that they tried to present to Mr. Hamilton earlier today, and we just slow down. I mean, if it's going to take six years, what's another month, for heaven's sakes? Thank you.
Just like to briefly address one of the comments, and then I'll ask Nate to address one of the others. Because I think it was a, a fair question of, of what this project might lead to long-term and maybe a statement that Ever, Evergy made at some point that they're able to, to address the power demand in the region. I just wanted to emphasize that, that the interconnection process is how the, the grid operator, the SPP, determines whether this project is necessary. The SPP is, is the agency that is basically responsible for the grid overall. Evergy would be a signature, a signatory to our interconnection agreement. So we're going through this process right now, the studies, to confirm that we do in fact need this project for the grid, that it's necessary. And so don't take our word for it, that it's, that this is necessary. We'll take SPP's word for it when they've conducted and finished their studies. The studies we've done show that this is absolutely necessary and will be a huge benefit to the, to, to the, to the community and to the grid. But we can't do anything unless we get an interconnection agreement with SPP. And so that's how we'll know that it's necessary for the grid, is when we get that interconnection agreement. And certainly, you don't need to, but you could make that a condition on your approval that we get it, we, we get an interconnection agreement in place with SPP. You don't need to do that because we actually absolutely need it in order to connect to that substation. But that's one way that you can be 100% certain that the project is necessary. And I just wanted to see if Nate, if, do you have any comments for the board on, on the timing of this and why we shouldn't delay any decision on the conditional use permit?
Yeah. And there was a good point to say, you know, how far along are we? Why are we asking for it today? Again, to go through kind of the big reasons for this ask now for three years is for us to have a certainty in the pathway to construct this project. We need and have been investing hundreds of thousands, if not millions of dollars, to go through this SPP process. We have gotten results. They are favorable, but there's additional parts to that study. We are confident in its outcome. But to continue down that process, we need to make investments, both in terms of commitment to that. Basically, you need to put down money, and they basically do this because they don't want people just putting their name in the hat. Hey, is this spot good? Is that spot good? They want people who are serious, and that's companies like ours. But to continue down this path, to continue making this project come to life, we need to continue to invest millions of dollars throughout this three-year process. So unfortunately, it just is one of those cases because of the process with SPP, because parts of our, our equipment take 24 months, 30 months to order, that it is, in, in this, equipment isn't universal. It's specific to this location, to this size that we're going to be interconnecting at. So that's why we need that assurance that we can achieve those conditions. It's, it's not, certainly not going to be the last conversation we have. We have the ERP, the Emergency Response Plan. So we'll ensure that we continue to work with the local responders, ensure that they are comfortable with our site, and that it is to, and if the National Fire Protection Association 855, their standard, that it meets that regardless of, of when we start construction. So those are things we're doing today that while we think it is three years, but it's still not the last conversation we're going to have. There's many other things that we need to do to achieve, and that's going to keep a, a positive project for the county.
Thank you.
Yep.
Any other public?
I just got one question. My name's John Swisher. I live at 4853 East McReynolds Road. I farm in that area and ranch. My question is, would any one of you guys want one of that thing in your backyard? That's all I got. Tony Johnson again. They keep mentioning this SVP or whoever runs the grid. This, one lady said that Evergy said they got it covered for Kansas. So the only reason they're here is because it's cheap. I'll reiterate that again. They're not here because they care about anybody here, because our power is taken care of. Evergy's just made the statement, we got Kansas covered, even in this heat, all right? But we're cheap out here. Land is cheap. Like I said, they started in San Francisco, and then they went to the liberal bastion of Houston down in Texas because they're pro-business. This has nothing to do-
A lot of opinion.
What's that?
You're laying a lot of opinion here.
Oh, I don't care.
I do.
It's America, buddy. Yeah, I got an open forum. It's a public forum.
Sir- Five minutes, you've got one left.
Can I add?
Yeah, go ahead. No, go ahead.
How long have you lived in Kansas?
I've lived here since 2012.
I've lived in six different states, and I've lived places, especially Kentucky, where the grid is nowhere near what everybody here enjoys.
Right. That's what I'm saying.
So to answer Mr. Swisher's question, I would put it in my backyard. I don't give a-
They're here because they've got an ideal situation with this connection, and they're out here in flyover country, all right? They're not going to, this electricity's not coming to Kansas. It's going anywhere but Kansas, because they've already said, Evergy's already said that they've got Kansas taken care of. Like I said, if you want to make a difference, let's permit for a power plant. This is a temporary solution. Four hours max for this acres of batteries. And they're only using 10 to 40 acres, so you know what's coming.
Yeah, I'm Randy Ziegler. I live at 3725 East Menor Road. Question I have is what kind of efficiency is this system? Because anytime you convert energy from AC to DC and back to AC, you're going to lose. They've also got the cooling and stuff, so what is the net loss of power by using these batteries?
Sure. That's a, a good question. So you're correct to the process of charging, storing, and then putting it back, you're going to lose electricity along the way. Most systems would have a 90 or so percent round-trip efficiency. It'll vary depending on product. The, the thing I would say, though, is that we are a private company doing business on our, on our behalf and, and, and doing it on our dime. So we are certainly going to make sure that it pencils and that it makes sense. So any loss in round-trip efficiency, the benefit exceeds that loss. The one other comment I'd make about, you know, certainly the grid I- The one other comment I'd make about, you know, certainly the grid, I saw that article too. It's great. I've, I live in an area where we haven't had that luxury, but I will say, given the process to get assets on the grid, you want to start this process now, because it has gotten worse over time, and there's a reason why we're talking about, is it, is it close to it or not? So that is why, there isn't necessarily an imminent problem, but certainly the market signals show that this area is particularly stressed and requires an asset such as this. The other thing, you know, we, again, we are a private business. We have no impact on the local rates for energy. I will say, though, it is our capital, it's our investment, so it won't adversely affect rates. We are not going to be getting a rate base, rate base back for our expenditures. It's all on, from our capital.
Nate, can you tell the Commission where some of, what other states some of our other projects are located in?
Yeah, so they're all across the country, twenty-eight states. We certainly don't pick states for the land value. Most of the cost of the project, if not ninety-nine-point-nine percent, is the product itself. Whether you're in the East Coast or West Coast or Kansas, it isn't the large land use like solar or wind, where that may actually factor into the calculus that there is some benefit because you have thousands of acres. Here, we're on a small track of land and making a massive investment. So it isn't anything to do with this area is cheaper for doing business or not. We do, we do projects wherever we see these reliability, potential outages, we go there, because we see the need, and the market signals that to us. So we wouldn't be here unless we were confident that there is a benefit to the local area.
Thank you. Any other public comment?
Could I speak? Perfect. My name's Brenda Tolzamarkis. I live at fifty-six thirteen South Cunningham Road, Gibson, Kansas. And I have respectfully listened to your presentation. Your presentation was excellent, but that does not deem that there aren't numerous questions that I have. So if, if I could ask some questions and then have them answered, I'd appreciate it. So in the DUDIC study that you did on noise, there were several points that you had at eighty-six-point-nine DBA, and, and that was only with cooling fans projected to run at forty percent. But your cooling fans on a hot summer day is going to have to run sixty-eight, ninety percent. None of that was factored in or presented to any of us within the community or to the Sling County representatives. So can we please have all your studies that, since you have been doing this and you have all the answers, can we have all your studies to be able to evaluate over the next sixty days after you present them to us, so that we totally understand what the noise impact would be to us that are living in the community? Is that something you'd be willing to give us? Yes or no, before any vote is taken?
Take the vote, please.
Second to respond.
Okay, second, second question-
Go ahead and finish.
Okay, the second question that I have is that there, these batteries will have heavy metals in them. So yes, of course, they can self-combust and they can burn down. My question is, is what happens to all the particulate? What happens to all the heavy metals that come out of these cases? How much volume are we looking at? What kind of studies from an industrial hygiene or environmental impact have you done for each one of these cabinets? Because I want everybody in this community to know, we are talking about hundreds of batteries. We're not talking about one or two. We're talking about hundreds. And these are going to be in sequence inside of these cases. So the studies that they had on the noise was two hundred, let me just state this out of your report. On the mega-pack cooling systems, you have noise being generated from these Tesla batteries at eighty-six-point-nine DBA, okay? And that's at one-third octave. So what that means to all of us in this community, when we have a cold winter day, that that noise is going to move way further. These studies that were presented to us only involve data from January and April. So once again, I'm asking for all of us, as a planning and zoning group, to have an opportunity, to have access to all the data, and all the microphone calibration, and all the variables, and the barometric pressure, and the temperatures, and the pressures that were done surrounding this study, so that we really, truly know how this attenuation's going to move across our land, in the Walnut Township, and for everybody involved. Not hypothetical things from a company that did this study out of California, but for us. Okay, the third thing that I'm asking for is I'm asking for all of the analytical data, and showing that when you go to decommission, if, how far down you have gone into the soil, and determine if there is any heavy metal content that has been generated, and if you have that data, along with any water supply studies. And if you don't have those studies, along with hazard assessments, I would like to know every single hazard that's going to be inside of that B-E-S-S operation. So if I would say to you today, and I'm asking every one of you on the planning and zoning, let me know, as a landowner, all the chemicals that are regulated, that are going to be on that plaque, before we ever even consider letting be brought in. Because the issue, toxically, with any heavy metal, is that once it comes into your body, it's not going to go out of your body until you are cremated and put down, and you're going to have all kinds of neurological issues. And that is a toxicological fact. So yes, we may contain these inside of a box, but what happens when we have a tornado? I have worked on projects where a tornado has sucked pigs' poop inside of an aerospace company. That was something that had to be dealt with and involved all kinds of endotoxins. So my point is, is yes, you can tell me from a fire point of view, you can tell me from a, an analytical point of view, that you've got all your bases covered. And your story, can I tell you, gentlemen, pretty smooth. But the fact is, you don't have all the data that applies to us within the Walnut Township, and how we're going to have to live with this for the next twenty, twenty-five years or thirty years as you commission this. So those are the, what I'm asking is say, put a bookmark, give us all your studies. Show us how good you are. Show us the analytical data. Show us the hazard assessments. Show us your noise surveys. Show us your groundwater surveys. Show us every aspect of this. And once we have that, and we have that as a community in our hands, let us come and be your team. Instead of telling us how good you are, let us see. Let's do a show-me, instead of a talk-me.
Can I ask you to close your comments?
Yes, close.
Okay, thank you, thank you. Okay, no, we're done. We're done. I'm closing the meeting. We're closing the meeting at ten o'clock. I'm not going to allow this to come to vote. Commission, how do you want to handle this? We're obviously not going to make a vote on this in the next three minutes.
You have the option, obviously, to table until the next month.
Can we open a public discussion-type meeting? There's a lot of questions that were just asked, and no, they're not going to answer them in the next three minutes?
What the, what you can do is, basically, we can make notes of those questions, and when, you can table it, and then keep the public hearing open.
That's what we want to do.
And then-
We want more public comment yet, and I'm not going to unload this on them.
And then, when we come back, address the, open, open, you know, I mean, continue the public comment period at the next meeting.
Are you okay with that? Because we've got more questions that want to be answered. It's time to close our meeting.
Yeah, that's absolutely what I was about, what I was about to ask when I stood up, is whether you would prefer to have another meeting to, for us to answer these questions. So if that's the board's preference-
I want everybody's questions to be answered.
Yeah, unless the board wants to take a vote tonight, we would, we would suggest that, yeah, we table it.
We're not going to make a vote on this in the next couple of minutes, because we haven't brought it back to the Commission yet for discussion.
I understand. So yeah, we would request then that the application be tabled to next month.
Mr. Chairman, can I move to table and keep this, 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 and keep the public discussion open for the next meeting? I don't know what exactly wording you would use on that, but I would move to do so.
Is that the correct wording we want here?
That is.
Okay, make-
Second table motion.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that we are going to table this until the next meeting, but leaving the open, public discussion open. No vote will be taken on this tonight?
And what I was going to say, tell the public, is there will be no publication since this is tabled. There will be no publication and no notice sent, since it's basically a continuation to next month. It's still open, so no publication will, or notification will be sent out.
Could we have a fifteen-minute closed session of just Commissions before the next meeting?
May I ask, what day are you going to reconvene this?
September twenty-sixth, isn't that correct?
I believe we've had that.
Yeah, September twenty-sixth.
We're going to use our five minutes? Are we out? We have to find other people to speak to?
We're done. We kept track of it.
So we have to find new people to speak to?
So can we, can we have a-
But we, Mr. Chairman, we have a motion and a second.
As you heard of that motion, can we include in that a closed discussion with the Commissioners?
At what time, what time are you talking?
He's over there shaking her head. Can we have an executive session?
An executive session, I guess, would-
If it fits one of the Kansas Open Meetings Act regulations, what would be the purpose of the executive session?
There's seven requirements of it, as you're probably aware, Phil.
Yeah. So-
Just discussion.
Well, it's got to, it's got to-
It's got to meet one of those open meetings exceptions.
And that's why I'm asking. I don't want to violate anything.
It's got to be non-elective personnel, it's got to be matters related to, about the closest thing is matters related to private and public information.
I mean, it's no problem. You can all sit here and listen to us talk for thirty minutes.
Well, not an executive, if you want to go executive session, it's got to, got to be one of those criteria.
We don't need to go, just ask if we should go executive, otherwise, they can sit here and listen to us for half an hour.
You could do that, too.
Right.
So you're saying you would like to have us come together, like, say, six-thirty, and we can just kind of-
And then be ready for the public comment.
-sit up here and talk about it, and they can be here if they so choose.
Right. Is there anything wrong with that? We don't need to. I just brought that up.
That's, I don't know of any-
Reason to-
Commission that has ever done, any planning commission that's ever done that.
I mean, we've had executive sessions before.
Okay, we, okay, if there, if they've been executive sessions before, then yeah, what you could do is probably do what I refer to them as as study sessions.
Okay.
And-
Well, then we'll just, we'll just open up with our Commission, and they can listen to our discussion before we open it up to the public.
Right, that would be before, before, yeah, before the meeting starts, next time, you can, like, six-thirty or whatever it is, like he was saying, and then discuss amongst each other, and then they can be present, but-
Yeah.
Commissioners, are you planning to carry forward my questions so that I get those answered?
That's what we've asked for. They'll bring it, which is why we're going to table it, so more questions can be answered. Thank you. You bet.
Thank you so much, gentlemen.
You betcha. That's why we're tabling it tonight, to me questions.
Appreciate you so much.
Okay. I'm leaving at ten o'clock.
Well, you better do something.
We've got to.
It has been properly moved and seconded, that we table the motion until the next meeting. All those in favor, please raise your right hand. Oppose, same sign. I don't know what the, what do we got up there?
Mr. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
I second that.
Did we get Paul?
I don't know that we got Paul's vote.
Did we get Paul's vote?
It was affirmative.
Is that?
All affirmative.
Yeah, right hand. We got you.
Okay, so we can do, we got the answer.
This is going to be really-